Before we call this meeting to order, we will hear instruction on how the public may access Spanish interpretation.
Thank you, Mayor. The following message will repeat in Spanish. We are offering live interpretation into Spanish VRs on platform. To access our Spanish channel, press the interpretation button at the bottom of your screen, where you will see a globe icon and choose Spanish. If you're joining via Zoom smartphone app, select your language by clicking more or the three dots at the bottom of your screen. Select Language, Interpretation, and choose Spanish. Bienvenidos. Estamos ofreciendo interpretación en vivo y en directo durante nuestra sesión en la plataforma Zoom. Para tener acceso a interpretación, oprima el icono del globo terráqueo al pie de su pantalla y seleccione Spanish o Español según su formato. Si está uniéndose y asume su teléfono inteligente, seleccione los tres puntitos al pie de su pantalla, elija Interpretación de idiomas, y presione Spanish o Español para activar su canal. Muchas gracias. Thank you, Mayor. Back to you.
Great, thank you.
Recording in progress.
With that, we will move on to our land acknowledgement. The city of South Lake Tahoe acknowledges the lands we occupy today are the lands and home of the Washoe tribe, the people from here known today as the Washoe Tribe of Nevada and California, a sovereign nation. Since the beginning of time and for thousands of years before the arrival of any other people, the Washoe lived here and cared for this place with values and intention that we can all learn from. On behalf of the city council, I would like to acknowledge, thank, and honor the indigenous Washoe tribal communities that are the past, present, and then future stewards of the Lake Tahoe Basin. And with that, we'll move to the Pledge of Allegiance. And we'll move on to our roll call.
Councilmember Middlebrook.
Here.
Councilmember Robbins.
Here.
Councilmember Krieger.
Here.
Mayor Proton Wallace.
Here.
Mayor Bass.
Here.
All present.
Great. And with that, we'll see if we have a closed session report.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. We had one item on closed session this evening regarding existing litigation in the Workers' Comp Appeals Board case involving retired employee Michael Gamberg, and there is no reportable action.
All right. And with this, we'll move to the public communication. This is the public's opportunity to speak on any topic not listed on this agenda. Comments shall be limited to four minutes. In accordance with the Brown Act, the city council cannot deliberate or vote on any matter raised under public communications, but may briefly respond to statements made or questions posed. And with that, we will open up public comment for anybody in the room. Yes, Mr. Kurzweiler.
Good evening. I just want to say thanks.
Can you?
Where's the chief? Anyway, tomorrow is the annual, the 10th Annual Christmas Tree Delivery down there at the Heavenly Village, and I just want to say thanks to everybody from the city that is cooperating with this and giving us the police guidance and the escort. The CHP is doing that. I know I'm not, you know, I don't have to show up every time and say it, but I do because I just want it on the record, and I want to say thank you to all you to do that, John and the chief over here and everybody else that does that. So, thank you, and this year's tree is going to be absolutely perfect.
Great. Thank you, Mr. Kurzweiler, and all your help through the years in this. It's a great thing. Anybody else in the room? Yes, just come forward and state your name for the record.
Hi, I'm Bob Poet, and we are in now the shoulder season, and our local businesses can use your help. I'm looking forward to hearing the mayor's updated list of new restaurants that we should try. And then one other thing that's not on the agenda, the price of victory is a better way forward. So, the election's over, we can all exhale. And regarding housing, there are literally dozens of new things to try and to explore. So, we'll be talking about one of those later tonight, but again, there are dozens, and it may take dozens, to have significant impact. So, please keep an open mind. One thing that I would like to boost is this new Labor Lodge Coalition, a gentleman who's running it as a founder, co-founder. His name's Christopher Reed, that's R-E-I-D, and he seems to be in the right place at the right time. His specialty is workforce housing, and that's something I think we could need. He's made some inroads. He's talked to a lot of people. He's talked to some of the people that are here, and they're looking for help with civic leaders and business leaders. So, watch for him. And they do have a website, they do have information. Give them a look over. And again, it's Labor. Watch for him. And they do have a website, they do have information. Give them a look over. And again, it's Labor Lodge Coalition. Thank you.
Great. Thank you so much. Anybody else in the room? Yes, Mr. Moser.
Good evening. Ed Moser, South Lake Tahoe. Yeah, I've a couple mentioned here previously, and then also to deaf ears down at the TRPA Governing Board. You have the land acknowledgement here before the meeting. You put that in, which is great, but concerns what my request was, that number one, the presidential appointee at TRPA should have a vote. We get, we've gotten hundreds and hundreds of millions of dollars from the federal government, and they've never had a vote, you know, one way or the other, or how to spend it down at TRPA. So, that's the first step. And the second step is to actually give a seat to the indigenous people here, to the Washoe tribe and others on the TRPA board, since, you know, since they were here for a few thousand years, you know, they at least deserve a seat at the table and a vote. So, nothing's been done, so I would like to see, maybe even have a resolution from this council and present it to TRPA. And to do that, so it would require a change to the compact. And while you were in DC, Mr. Bass, you had your chance to talk to the congressional delegation and bring that to their attention while you were there. That would have been a great opportunity. So, I would like to see a resolution come forward from the council and get on the ball to get Congress off their behind and to do that. It's very simple, and but it's something that's long, you know, been overdue for, since TRPA was formed, they should have been given a seat at that time. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Moser. Anybody else in the room? Yes, Ms. Reagan.
Hi, everybody. I'm Angie Reagan.
This is Mbah. I am on disability, and I'm a physical therapist. I also am the founder of Access Tahoe. This is an initiative dedicated to creating access in Tahoe for all. I'm here tonight to ask for your leadership and commitment in making South Lake Tahoe a more inclusive and accessible destination, not just for visitors, but for the residents who call this community home. Access means more than physical entry. It means ensuring equal access to services, activities, healthcare, mental health care, businesses, recreation, and most importantly, a sense of community. Access to kindness, a welcoming culture, and universal design should be the foundation of our town, not something individuals have to repeatedly request as accommodations. I recently volunteered for the Travelability Conference in San Francisco, where the mission is to inspire and educate the travel industry to provide accessible experiences so that people with disabilities can enjoy travel as much as everyone else. It was an eye-opening experience that reminded me how much potential we have to do better here in Tahoe. It was also disappointing to see representation as far as Australia for people, cities, and organizations who prioritize access, yet no other representation from Tahoe. Again, the ADA was made law 34 years ago, and Tahoe still has a lot of catching up to do. This includes inclusive recreation, beaches, trails, parks, playgrounds, snow parks, and buildings designed with universal access in mind, community participation, classes, events, and roads that are safe and inclusive for all, effective communication, accessible websites, interpreters, communication, captions, and signage, along with awareness campaigns, awareness and training, educating businesses, employees, and residents on both apparent and non-apparent disabilities, a culture of inclusion, moving away from ADA mentality and toward universal design and radical inclusion, embracing safety, comfort, and connection for everyone. South Lake Tahoe has the opportunity to redefine what it means to be an accessible destination while building a stronger, more inclusive community. I urge the city council to take action by committing resources to improve access in all its forms, from infrastructure to education to outreach. Let's make Tahoe a place where everyone feels welcomed, included, and valued. Thank you for your time and for stepping up to ensure access in Tahoe for all.
Great. Thank you, Ms. Reagan. Anybody else in the room that would like to give public comment on anything not on tonight's agenda? Seeing none, we will go ahead and open up our Zoom platform.
Yeah, we'll go ahead and open up our Zoom platform for anyone who wants to provide public comment on any topic not on today's agenda. I will note for the record that we did receive, and I did distribute to council, public comments from Clemens, Barney, Bastilius, Carlos, DeRouelle, Diga, Edwards, Fortescue, Griffin, Irwin, Judge, Lesgraft, Post, Puck, and Stepstov. And we do have one hand raised from Mr. Asbury. Mr. Asbury?
Can you hear me?
Yes, I can. Go ahead, please.
Oh, okay. Yeah, thank you. Thank you very much, Susan Blankenship and city council, for allowing me this time to speak. I wanted to bring up a couple items, non-agenda items, of course. I was thinking that as far as this Zoom platform, I'm seeing more community members wanting to participate in having a voice in the community, and they have expressed to me challenges with getting on the Zoom platform. I'm talking on the Zoom platform now. I noticed that it is a copy and paste instead of a hyperlink situation, and I don't know if there's, you know, minuscule steps that can be taken to make it a little easier for the public that might not, that might be like a little bit technology compromised or challenged so that they can participate and have their voice heard. The second item I'd like to draw attention to is, I was looking through the city website, and I was unable to find anything related to a code of conduct for city council members. And so, I'm sure one more than likely exists, but with that said, if it does exist, I was wondering if there could be some modification to not disparage other city council, sitting city council members and/or the community that the city council member would be representing, both for, you know, for the local population, and it's kind of embarrassing when certain city council member might go on national publications and telling tourists to not come here. And we are a tourist community, and I think that that kind of stuff is not good for the community as a whole. But anyway, I was wondering if a code of conduct isn't, has not been created, maybe we could go ahead and create one as a community, and if there is one, maybe there could be some certain standards in which, you know, if there's like, for example, a social media platform with city councilman member after that, you know, as a description of that social platform member, that they would allow comments from the community, and they would not delete comments from the community so that their voice wasn't heard. Otherwise, that's about, that's about all I have to say. Thank you very much for your time.
Thank you. There's no additional public comments at this time, Mayor.
Great. All right. With that, we will go ahead and move on to any city commissioners that would like to give a report tonight in the room, and I don't see.
I'm going to go outside and see if I can.
Sorry, let me.
Oh, oh, John Messina.
Sorry.
No worries.
Okay, I think we're good.
Great. All right. With that, we will go ahead and move on to any city commissioners that would like to give a report tonight in the room, and I don't see.
I'm going to go outside and see if I can.
Sorry, let me.
Oh, oh, John Messina.
Sorry.
No worries.
Okay, I think we're good.
Great. All right. With that, we will go ahead and move on to any city commissioners that would like to give a report tonight in the room, and I don't see.
I'm going to go outside and see if I can.
Sorry, let me.
Oh, oh, John Messina.
Sorry.
No worries.
Okay, I think we're good.
Great. All right. With that, we will go ahead and move on to our consent agenda. Anybody on council that would like to pull any items off of the consent agenda?
Actually, Mayor, I do believe that we have city, I'm sorry, city commissioner reports. Did you say that? And I was trying to.
I did.
I'm sorry.
No worries.
I apologize. I did see Ms. Ballard's hand raised.
Oh.
I apologize.
No worries.
I was in the midst of trying to unmute Mr. Asbury. All right, Ms. Ballard, go ahead.
Hi, everyone. I just want to know, you to know that I am here tonight for any questions on the acting on the agenda. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Ballard.
All right, now we're good.
All right, good. With that, we'll go ahead and move on to our consent agenda. I'm looking to council for any items that we're pulling. Seeing none, we will go ahead and open this up to public comment for anybody in the room that would like to give public comment on any item.
Excuse me, Mr. Mayor, before we move to public comment. I believe there was a recusal for one of the items.
Oh.
Whoops. Yes, so regarding the consent agenda, I recuse myself going forward from number four, the heavenly area annexation, as an implication for my salary.
Okay. All right. And with that, we will go ahead and open up public communication. Yes, Mr. Edelman.
Good evening, Mayor. Good evening, councilors. I'm talking about item number four on the consent agenda. As we prepare to open for winter season tomorrow, incredibly excited about that a couple days early with significant incoming weather in the forecast, which is also very exciting, I'd like to reiterate our disappointment with the city canceling our parking agreement, which worked for over 35 years. Despite this cancellation, I am proud that our prior partnership included Heavenly's contributions of over $100,000 towards repaving Skiveron Boulevard, $50,000 for on-street parking annually, and over $200,000 in our costs to plow city streets. Along with our reservations-based parking program, together, we had the best results in recent memory of improving traffic flow and parking conditions in the resort area. The city is the only partner making the choice to deteriorate this experience. An additional unfortunate component of that canceled agreement is snow removal, which we have historically performed at a higher level of service, resulting in safer critical roadways that service our community and resort, especially on heavy snowfall days and peak periods. These roads are key arteries, and the work we've done in partnership with the city in regards to plowing helps us not only stay safe in the winter, but also allows us to operate as a business and provide the best possible experience for our guests and employees, which include many local residents. Regarding annexation, we were having conversations in good faith with the city, and I respect the desire and invitation to change the city boundary. You surprised us when you changed the scope of annexation from just the California base area to the entirety of the California side of the resort. That change, far beyond any city services, shifted the tone of our conversations. And in canceling the parking agreement, which was done because we wouldn't immediately agree to annexation, you took away something we all care about, snow removal. Risking public safety and guest experience in our shared destination, if the city is willing to negatively impact Heavenly operations, our team members.
Really?
Guest experience, if the city, sorry, took away something we all care about, snow removal, risking public safety and guest experience in our shared destination. If the city is willing to negatively impact Heavenly operations, our team members, guests, and our community, it does not inspire confidence and adds to my concerns about the uncertainty of annexation. These actions risk public safety, damage the guest experience and reputation in our shared destination, and hurt our business. These are in efforts to bring us closer, into a closer relationship with the city and to agree to annexation. Removing these longstanding positive working relationships is not bringing us closer. We want to continue to have a strong, productive relationship with the city and hope we can go back to that place. In the meantime, please let us plow to a higher level of service that we're able to provide. You have heard support for this position from many community stakeholders, including Ski California, the Lake Tahoe Visitor Authority, and the South Lake Tahoe Lodging Association.
Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Edelman. Anybody else in the room that would like to give public comment on the consent agenda? All right, seeing none, we will go ahead and look on for our Zoom platform.
We'll go ahead and open up our Zoom platform for anyone who wants to provide public comment on any topic on today's consent agenda. No additional public comments, Mayor.
Great. With that, we will go ahead and bring it back to council for either a motion or any questions.
I move that we accept the consent agenda with the recusal stated.
I'll second. I just have, can I make a brief statement on item four? Is that out of scope for consent right now without pulling?
Because it's on consent, we don't comment on it.
That's very good. All right. I just second.
All right. With that, we have a motion in a second, and we can vote.
Your motion unanimously carries. Thank you.
Great. All right. With that, we will go ahead and move on to our public hearing. This is going to be for the master fee schedule and amendment to adopt new demolition permit fees, and this will be Mr. Jeremy Harrison.
Good evening, councilmembers. Mayor, for the record, my name is Jeremy Harrison, and I am the building official for the city of South Lake Tahoe. The reason I am approaching you this evening is I will be presenting a request to adopt new building permit fees for demolition permits. Currently, demolition permit fees are calculated at 2% of the project valuation, which is consistent with all other building division permits issued on the daily. It was noticed that larger projects with larger valuations are charged fees that exceed the cost of the services rendered for a typical demolition project. As such, staff conducted research on our surrounding cities and counties to see how they assess demolition permit fees. That information is available to you in your staff reports. Based on these findings, staff recommends a new demolition permit fee of $430 based on the minimum permit fee of $257 and one hour of inspection time at $173. To conclude, staff requests that council pass a resolution amending fiscal year 2023, 2024 master schedule of fees and charges for city services to adopt a new fee of $430 for demolition permits, and I'm happy to answer any questions you may have.
Great, thank you. Council, any questions on this item?
Just curious, what, what level of demolition requires a demolition permit? Like, how much demolishing need, does one need to have to require a permit for demolition?
All demolition requires a permit.
So, taking down a deck would require a permit?
Absolutely.
Or what about a shed?
Yes, that would require a permit as well. The way the building code reads and the California residential code as well, both require a permit for demolition. It does not go into depths of the quantities to define a demolition.
Would it make sense to think about having a lower-priced version of that permit if someone is just demolishing a bit of a deck or taking out a shed rather than demolishing a hotel? You're saying all of those permits would be, cost would cost the same, right?
The same, and because the amount of work would be relatively the same. So, what we would be doing is our typical hour of plan review, and it's going to be much less than an hour in our, in our sense, but we round up to an hour to keep it even. It is, it would never go past an hour. We're looking at plans showing a building being removed. We're showing locations of utilities being capped so that they can be found in the future where they are removed to, and then we are leaving ourselves room for all of our administrative costs as well as inspection and the possibility of there be needing another inspection for that, for that project.
Like, I understand that the, so would that include, by the way, with that kind of demolition, would that include taking out an interior wall, for example?
Yes, sir.
That would be, okay. So, some of these are the kinds of things a homeowner might do on their own, and other things, like demolishing the Motel 6, are something that would involve engineers and contracts and millions of dollars, and the, you know, once it's above a certain level, the $400 is insignificant relative to the cost of demolition, of the action of demolition, but for a home remodeling or removing a shed or something like that, it would be, it would behoove us to make that less costly for, you know, for a homeowner doing a renovation project on their own home rather than have that be a full-price thing. I'm just curious, like, what, how meaningful is that question really? Because like, how much do we get in terms of demolition requests?
Allow me to clarify in that it is not so much about the cost of the valuation, it is about the cost of defraying our operation and ensuring that we are not charging more than would be required for the amount of work that we would be doing.
I understand, but from the standpoint of the citizen, if they want to take out a wall in their own home and patch up that wall and do a little remodeling, we've now added a $400 and something dollar cost to it for, for that individual, whereas it's the same cost if you're demolishing an entire hotel, at which point it's an incidental, negligible amount. And so, generally, we want the impact to be proportionate. I understand that we're looking at this from a point of view of the city's cost of implementation, because if it's an hour review for them all, then that's fair to have it be the same from the city side, but not really from the citizen's side, you know, especially if it's something that a homeowner is trying to pay for out of pocket. If we can make that cheaper for residents, I think that would be, if there's some way to do that, I think it would be worth considering.
Yes, Ms. Wallace, but I, just so I can clarify real quick, we are making it cheaper from where we're at now to.
Yes, we are.
It'll be much cheaper because it's not based on the valuation of the project.
It's based on valuation, so.
It's 2% of the project, right?
2% of the project valuation. So, any project that, the calculated valuation being 21,500, and in excess of that would exceed the $430 calculated permit fee and escalate incrementally as the cost of that, of those projects went up. Below that, we would still stay with our, it would be our minimum permit fee and an hour of inspection. So, regardless, the work is staying the same. We are just trying to keep the cost of these permits from skyrocketing.
Hang on, okay.
As, as project valuations increase.
Maybe I'm not quite following, so, so just to make sure I am understanding correctly there. Maybe I didn't quite catch that. Is it still 2% of the valuation below the $20,000 something dollar threshold?
It is.
Oh, okay. So, it's not $400 and something dollars for everyone across the board? It's the percentage up to the $400 and then flat from there on out?
Now, I'm sorry, I misunderstood what you were asking. No, it is, we're asking to adopt a $430 flat fee across the board.
So, that would mean that for a small home project, it would represent an increase in the fee from what it would be now, right?
So, we would, we charged our minimum permit fee and an hour of, of labor, excuse me, of inspection time on that.
Go ahead, ask your question. I'm just trying to make sure I.
So, while I appreciate the, the attempt at helping local homeowners, would it, such an inspection and the, the amount that we charge, one, we are trying to get to cost recovery, but two, you're attempting to keep homeowners who are doing their own projects from taking down a load-bearing wall or when they take out a deck or a shed hitting utilities and things like that? So.
Absolutely.
Thank you.
That will be part of our review when we are looking at the plans to see what the demolition entails, what it's tied into, if there's utilities involved, how it affects the attached structure, if at all. This will all be part of our plan review, and thus the necessity for a plan review. And then, of course, the inspections to verify the conditions are met against the approved plan.
Thank you.
Great. Ms. Wallace, any other questions from council? All right, seeing none, we will go ahead and open up.
I just want to clarify, so then, so then if someone, if a homeowner is doing a project of, say, a $10,000 valuation, right, then under the current schedule, that would be times point oh two, that would be $200 today.
But we have a minimum permit fee, and we're also going to need to charge for an hour of inspection.
Oh, okay. So, it wouldn't be $200 now?
No.
Because that's the, it would be the greater of 2% or the minimum permit fee plus an hour of inspection? Is that what the current fee schedule is?
From my understanding, yes.
Mayor, councilmember, I think I try to add a little bit of a clarity here. So, regarding even a small project, let's say a 10,000 in this example, there's still the minimum cost incurred by the city to the one hour of, even on a small project, verify that there is not a utility being hit or an electrical outlet being impacted, let's say on a small interior wall. There's still the intake process and the issuance process. This, this permit is, fee was determined to be a reasonable amount to cover the.
Oh, okay, so it wouldn't be $200 now, because that's the, it would be the greater of 2% or the minimum permit fee plus an hour of inspection. Is that what the current fee schedule is?
From my understanding, yes.
Mayor, council member, I think I try to add a little bit of a clarity here. So regarding even a small project, let's say a 10,000 in this example, there's still the minimum cost incurred by the city to the one hour of, even on a small project, verify that there is not a utility being hit, or an electrical outlet being impacted, let's say on a small interior wall. There's still the intake process and the issuance process. This, this permit is fee was determined to be a reasonable amount to cover the minimum cost incurred. That's incurred even on the smallest permit. So it was a way to at least cover the minimum cost incurred by the city.
I understand that there's, that's the city's cost.
Correct.
I guess my question is, what is the permit cost for, today for a $10,000 job?
$430, sir.
Today?
Yes.
Oh, because that, because they're, because the 2% is below that minimum?
Absolutely.
That's what it is today for any project? Okay. This is what I was trying to get at. It was like, you know, if the small projects are going up or not. It sounds like the small projects that are below the threshold are staying the same.
They're, they're staying the same. We are trying to keep them in that area, and we are also trying to curtail the skyrocketing costs of the larger projects. So we're trying to take care of both sides there.
All right. So it's not that a current $10,000 scale project is $200 and it's going to go to 400 and change. It's already 400 and change because that's the minimum amount.
You are correct, and I apologize for the confusion.
All right, very good. Thank you very much. That's.
Thank you, Mr. Harrison. Appreciate it.
Just trying to make sure I'm on the same page as all. Thank you.
Thank you.
All right, yep. With that, we will go ahead and open up public comment on item number six for anybody in the room that would like to give public comment. All right, seeing none, we will open up our Zoom platform.
Yeah, we'll open up our Zoom platform for anyone who wants to provide public comment on agenda item six. No public comments, mayor.
Great. All right. With that, we'll bring it back to council for any other questions or of motion.
I move that we pass a resolution amending the fiscal year 23-24 master schedule of fees and charges for city services to adopt new fee of $430 for demolition permits. Second.
All right, we have a motion in a second and we can vote.
That motion unanimously carries.
Great. With that, we will move to item number seven. This is an ordinance for employee housing outreach update and employee housing signage, and this will be Ms. Wackenhut-Lomeli.
Good evening, mayor, council members and staff. For the record, Jessica Wackenhut-Lomeli, Housing Manager. Today I will be providing an update on our outreach conducted on employee housing, and then I'll move on to the first reading of the employee housing signage ordinance. At the September 26, 2023 city council meeting, the council was presented the framework for developing a potential employee housing bill of rights ordinance. At this meeting, council directed staff to draft an employee housing bill of rights. Then at the January 9, 2024 city council meeting, staff provided an update on their research on the California Employee Housing Act and the California Department of Housing and Community Development Departments, or HCD, oversight and enforcement of that policy. At this meeting, council directed staff to report substandard housing complaints related to employee housing received through the housing hotline to HCD for further investigation and enforcement. There was also a motion at this time to bring back an ordinance that all employee housing post an informational poster on site informing the tenants to call the housing hotline for any substandard housing conditions existing. Since the January 9 meeting, staff conducted general public outreach and directed targeted outreach to employees operating and/or owning employee housing. There are currently five active and three inactive permitted employee housing sites within the city as defined by HCD. Four of the active sites are operated by Heavenly Valley Limited Partnership, and one is operated by Airmark Sports and Entertainment Services. There is one unpermitted employee housing site that we were made aware of through this process, and it's owned and operated by Edgewood Tahoe. Staff reached out to the three employers and only received responses from Edgewood Tahoe. Housing staff met with Edgewood staff to discuss the California Employee Housing Act since they did not have an active permit. Edgewood owns the SRO property for their employees, and it is certified under the city's SRO inspection program. Immediately following staff's meeting with Edgewood, their staff applied for a California employee housing permit beginning in January 2020, sorry, 2025. They do only do annual renewals for, under the permitting for California Employment Housing Act. Attachment three in this, in the packet contains a list of all the outreach staff conducted to inform the general public, including property owners and employees, about employee housing. Since the January 9, 2024 city council meeting, staff have only received one housing complaint at an employee housing location. On Jan, on October 17, 2024, the draft ordinance was presented at a duly noticed planning commission meeting. The amendments and additions in the city code require signage to be posted in Spanish and English with a contact information for the city's housing hotline for employee housing at SRO and MFD properties. Planning commission did make a recommendation at that hearing to include property management contact information on the signage at MFD and SRO properties in addition to the housing hotline contact information. Today, staff is recommending that the city council pass a motion to hold a first reading by title only of an ordinance amending Title VI of the city code by amendments, additions, and deletions to the adopted codes in Title VI, 6.15.710 and 6.30.080, and refer second reading and adoption to the December 10 city council meeting. Thank you.
Great. Thank you, Ms. Lomeli, and let's see, any questions from council on this item? Mr. Robbins?
Yeah, I read through the materials here. The research was excellent. Just curious if in your investigation you came across any single family housing that was being used as employee housing? That, I'm aware of that in other resort towns have done that occasionally. I just don't know if there's any of that here, or do we have any way of tracking that at all?
Currently, we have no way of tracking that, and we are not made aware of any of single family homes that are used for that, and the California Employee Housing Act applies to five or more people from the same employer.
Five or more, right, but you might have a single family house that has five people in it?
Yes.
Or three people in it or whatever. So, but we're not aware of any single family housing that's being used as employee housing.
Not at this time.
But if it were, we might not have a way to know about it either, because it wouldn't go through the California. If there was four people in a house that was being rented by a resort, then that wouldn't show up, would that not show up through the California state?
Yeah, unless it's permitted, then it would not show up in the database.
Would it, does it require a permit if it's being used as employee housing and it's a single family house?
Yes.
Even if it's like four people or three people or whatever?
No, it'd be five or more.
So if it's four people in a two bedroom ranch house, then it wouldn't show up, it wouldn't require a permit?
Correct.
Interesting. Okay. All right, thanks.
All right. Thank you, Mr. Robbins, and thank you, Ms. Lomeli. With that, we will go ahead and open up public comment on item number seven. For anybody in the room that would like to give public comments, seeing none, we will look to our Zoom platform.
Yeah, we'll open up our Zoom platform for anyone who wants to provide public comment on agenda item seven. No public comments, mayor.
With that, we will go ahead and bring this back to council for a motion.
I, go ahead. Do we have discussion, or do we want a motion right away?
Um, I don't, unless you're, we're not, if you want discussion, or if you have anything else, go ahead.
No, I'm prepared to make a motion, but I didn't want a staff with discussion if people had.
Go ahead and make the motion.
All right. I move to hold a first reading by title only of an ordinance amending Title VI, sections 6.15.710, comma, 6.15.730, and 6.30.080 of the South Lake Tahoe City Code to add requirements for employee housing signage and refer second reading and adoption to the December 10, 2024 meeting.
A second.
All right, we have a motion in a second and we can vote.
That motion unanimously carries.
I just had a quick follow up question before we move on. Is that okay? I just forgot that I wanted to ask something. Is there, are there requirements that the city will develop on like the size of the sign and font size? It doesn't have to be like tiny font game nonsense like there is with the, like they have with the employee rights posters that say they must at least be a certain size? Sorry, I just, I forgot to ask that when, when we were on the.
The ordinance doesn't have requirements for that.
But, okay, so we'll set, the city will set those, or the, it doesn't, any sign can meet those requirements?
A sign, any sign can meet those requirements. It does require that they're in Spanish and English.
All right. Okay. I just, sorry, while you, just wanted to ask that question while I still had.
Great. With that, we will go ahead and move on to item eight. This is going to be the Pay for Success contracts with Live Violence Free and Tahoe Coalition for the Homeless, and this will be also Ms. Wackenhut-Lomeli.
Good evening. Again, Jessica Wackenhut-Lomeli, Housing Manager. So today I'm going to be talking about Pay for Success contracts with Live Violence Free and Tahoe Coalition for the Homeless. Prevention in responding to homelessness contains nuanced approaches, making the coordination of a strategic approach challenging, but will facilitate better outcomes overall. On September 10, 2024, the city council was presented with the first annual report on homelessness. At this meeting, staff highlighted the financial concerns at Live Violence Free, or LVF, and Tahoe Coalition for the Homeless, or TCH. Council member Kriegen, seconded by Mayor Bass, made a motion to bring back a discussion on a contract for service for LVF and TCH, given the services that they provide that reduce the impact on city services and the city budget. Pay for Success is a model that advances solutions to nuanced issues such as homelessness while generating successful outcomes for families, individuals, and communities. Pay for Success works when a government entity enters into a contract to pay for concrete measurable outcomes once they are achieved. We know that LVF and TCH have the skills, relationships, and experience to get vulnerable populations housed and remain housed with the necessary wraparound services. This model allows the city to acknowledge the contributions that these nonprofits that generate savings for local government. In the staff report, I included a few recommended metrics that included the number of referrals from city of South Lake Tahoe departments that include police and fire or development services. It also included the number of individuals who are remaining in housing as well as the individuals placed in housing. We know that both of these organizations receive at least two referrals per week from city departments, including development services, and a conservative estimate is servicing 100 clients per agency over the year. Today's staff is recommending that the city council make a motion directing staff to develop contracts that include the outcomes with both agencies based on the Pay for Success model, an amount not to exceed $40,000 for each agency. If council directs, contracts will be developed that outline the service provided consistent with the incurred costs for providing such service. We also have Kimberly Peterson, Executive Director of Tahoe Coalition for the Homeless, available over Zoom, in addition to Chelsea Thomas, Executive Director of Live Violence Free, here in the audience today for additional questions if you all have any. Thank you.
Great. Thank you, Ms. Lomeli. Any council members that would like to ask questions? Yes, Mr. Metalbrook.
For the outcome measures, first, I think, you know, Pay for Success is an awesome model to be following. You know, just of the three outcomes that you recommended, two of them had to do with housing. Is that the majority of the calls for service that they're receiving is related to housing? Then that's why those are the outcomes? Are there a whole gambit or potpourri of, of calls and services that they'd be providing?
There are a variety of calls that they are receiving, so it depends if it's fire or PD. They're receiving different kinds of calls than development services is calling, so it really depends. But the way I came up with these are, these are the common outcomes that both agencies are meeting at the current time, and through the continuum of care, they both have grants through that, and they're tracking these already. And so when I develop the contracts with both agencies, we would look deeper into what are some of the other metrics we can be looking at as well.
Yeah, that'd be my, one of my recommendations is not get too focused on housing, because if people need a bunch of stuff that's not housing related, the, the outcomes and the measures aren't being measured. And then in terms of number of referrals, did you think anything about number of referrals versus cases closed? Because you could send them a ton of referrals and they don't do anything with it, and the metric shows, oh, you got a ton of referrals, you're doing a good job. Doesn't necessarily reflect the outcome of closing those cases.
Yeah, definitely. I think with both agencies, like I mentioned, through the COC and their grant funding that they receive, they definitely close them out and continue to track the client a lot of time, and so we could access that as well. But it's great recommendation.
Great, thank you. No further questions.
Great. Thank you, Ms. Wallace.
Thank you for this. I also think that these Pay for Success, this model is really good. One thing that I would like to see and wanted to get your take on it is whether or not we can, as part of this model and part of this funding, get a warm room. Working in the line of work that I do, I see many individuals who just need a place to sleep overnight, and, and of course, all of the other services, but coming up, we're having a cold front come through town, and we need that as well, and similar to the model that was in place prior to 2020. So can that be part of this?
That's a great question. I would say for right now, what I do know is Tahoe Coalition was granted funds through the COC to operate the shelter throughout the winter, and I believe Tahoe Youth and Family Services was as well. They both have different models, but under those contracts, it is required to be done under the coordinated entry system, which is not anyone can just walk in. So that's how a lot of the funding is set up, is that they have to have an intake process to be admitted into these locations as well.
So to clarify, anybody who shows up has to be part of the coordinated entry as opposed to just showing up and needing a place to sleep overnight?
Correct.
And that's based on their funding that they get from outside sources?
Yes.
Is there the ability to go outside of that funding, for instance, allow the city to help fund that type of a service and not wreck their opportunities for that other funding?
I believe so. I would have to defer to Kimberly to ask her about that, because I know their shelter is only, I believe, 14 beds, and so it's already pretty filled throughout the year with the clients that have, because the CES, the coordinated entry system is the highest vulnerability scores, and so they already have a hard enough time getting, capturing some of those people within their shelter. And that's true, I believe, with Tahoe Youth and Family Services who provide housing vouchers. And so it'd have to be probably at another location.
Okay, I'll leave the rest of mine for council discussion. Thank you.
Great. Thank you, Ms. Wallace. Any other council members with questions before we move on to a public comment?
I mostly wanted to follow up on the need for a warm room, but I'll hold that for conversation as well.
Great. Thank you, Ms. Lomeli. We will go ahead and move on to public comment for item number eight. Anybody in the room? Yes, Ms. Thomas.
Good evening, council, mayor, and staff. Thank you for the opportunity to address you all this evening. My name is Chelsea Thomas, and I'm the Executive Director at Live Violence Free. I want to express my gratitude for your consideration of the proposed Pay for Success contracts with both Live Violence Free and Tahoe Coalition for the Homeless. This initiative is a significant step towards addressing the complex and interconnected challenges of homelessness and housing instability in South Lake Tahoe. At LVF, we know firsthand how stable housing, wraparound services, and collaborative partnerships transform lives. For many survivors of domestic violence, sexual assault, and child abuse, safe housing is not just a need, it's the foundation for rebuilding their futures. Domestic violence remains one of the leading causes of homelessness. Our programs provide critical support from transitional housing to rental assistance, and this partnership will enable us to continue meeting these urgent needs while expanding our impact. The proposed initiative creates tangible outcomes, provides cost savings to the city, and strengthens partnerships. By focusing on measurable results, this model ensures that every dollar invested delivers meaningful change. For LVF, this means helping individuals and families secure housing, stay housed, and access the supportive services that they need to thrive. Homelessness impacts our entire community. Programs like this reduce reliance on emergency services from law enforcement to healthcare, freeing up resources for other critical priorities. Collaboration with the city demonstrates a shared commitment to solutions at work. This model not only strengthens, strengthens the relationship between LVF and the city, but also builds a stronger safety net for our community. As a nonprofit, we understand the challenge of balancing limited operational funding with increasing service demands. Flexible funding like this allows us to address immediate needs while planning for sustainability, ensuring that we can continue serving those who rely on us most. I respectfully urge you to approve the recommendation and move forward with the Pay for Success contracts. Together, we can create a lasting impact, building a safer and healthier South Lake Tahoe community for everyone. Thank you so much for your commitment to the community.
Great. Thank you, Ms. Thomas. Anybody else in the room that would like to give public comment? Seeing none, we will go to Zoom.
Yeah, we'll open up our Zoom platform for anyone who wants to provide public comment on agenda item eight. No additional public comments, mayor.
Great. And with that, we'll bring it back to council. Ms. Wallace?
I've been pretty vocal on my thoughts that we need a warm room back in the community. Just anecdotally, I work at a church, and people come to the door, especially this time of year, almost daily, asking for warm clothing and help. And it would be nice, like I was able to in the past, to be able to refer them to a warm room. And some of those people are going to seek services, and it's going to be so amazing for them, but some, it's a choice. for them, but some, it's a choice I get, that they don't necessarily want other help, they just need a place to sleep that night that's warm. And I think that if we're going to go this route, if it's at all possible, we need to encourage and help fund, it sounds like, a warm room. And I'm willing to do that.
Great, good comments. Mr. Robbins.
Yeah, my, believe it or not, my first entree into local politics was not Measure T, it was the two winters I spent doing laundry at the Warm Room, back when it was operating out of that dentist's office off of Highway 50. And I did the laundry of all kinds of people. I did the laundry of people who had serious mental health issues, and I did the laundry of a kid who was a lift operator at Sierra at Tahoe, and had gotten priced out of his rental, and sometimes it was just too cold for him to sleep in his car, and every kind of person in between. And, you know, I've been, lately, I've been making the rounds of getting late-night London Fog lattes at Starbucks at the state line, and that has become a de facto warm room, because that is a warm place people can be indoors, and I don't begrudge people for finding a warm place to be on a cold night. But we should be doing better than outsourcing that kind of support services to Starbucks. The biggest problem I observed, working or volunteering at the Warm Room, wasn't the staff who was excellent, but it was the fact that they could never seem to manage to find a consistent place to operate. They were, you know, getting six-month leases here, and then a few-month leases there, and then sometimes they would be last-minute struggling to find a place to be, and so the lack of an appropriate, correctly-sized and outfitted, sort of permanent place was one of the biggest problems. And I think I agree entirely with what Councilmember Wallace was saying. I would only add to that, that we should also think about, not just the funding, but helping with a location, to whatever extent we can do that. And I might suggest that I don't want to propose solutions off the cuff. It would be good, I think, if maybe we gave staff direction to coordinate, to reach out to the Tahoe Coalition for the Homeless, and figure out how, what the city can do to support getting a warm room service up and running again, and have our staff work with their staff, and then come back to us with whatever the response is. I mean, I can gin up thoughts on the topic, but that's not the right way to do this. So I just, I agree that we're in need of that kind of emergency shelter. We are also in need of the kind of intake process, you know, long-term resolution and finding people housing and getting them through care, and that, that sort of supportive housing model as well. This is not an either-or situation, and I want to make sure that it doesn't turn into an either-or situation. If there's some bizarro funding situation in which, you know, the funding they have means they can't do this, then we should figure out some other way, but it's why I would like our staff to figure that out, and then figure out what resources would be needed, and then we can come back and look at, because resourcing is kind of where we're at, and, but I think this is a problem that, that needs that kind of, something akin to the warm room, but probably done in a more, in a way that can be done in a more consistent fashion, a more, you know, year-on-year location, with more stability than it was done when it was operating in the past, and they are at a different location every year, every winter, which I think would help a lot, you know, if you, if you're at the same place year after year, you can get better at doing that kind of operation, so.
Great, thank you, Mr. Robbins. Any other, Ms. Krieger?
Thank you. I don't want us to get too far off what the topic here is, and so I just want to say that I'm very in support of contracts for both of these organizations, that the city has a longstanding relationship with both of these organizations and a strong quality of success. So I think that that will definitely be the same moving forward. I really liked the additional metrics that were brought up, because I think that that will, that will show even more strongly. And also, I just, when, when I was the mayor two years ago, we, Joe, staff and I, Joe and I had a couple different meetings with people to really try and work on this, because it's obviously, policy-wise, we are in agreement that this is a really important issue, that is really hard to figure out. You know, we came at it with all of the solutions that we're talking about here, and that was two years ago. So I think that it's pretty clear that what we would like to see is a continued effort to make a warm room happen, that would be a walk-in, you're, it's cold tonight, here's somewhere to go, so obviously, that's not part of what we're deciding tonight, but that definitely is our policy here.
Great, thank you, Ms. Krieger. Any other council members? No? All right, with that.
Yeah, ditto.
Yeah, ditto, yeah. I would, I would also agree with all of those comments. I think that the warm room is critical, knowing, though, it is challenging. I had, you know, looked at it in my own building, and there's without a doubt challenges, so I think it is more than the funding, it's us working on a location and the requirements that it really does take to make that happen. So with that, I will look for a motion.
If I may, Mayor Bass, really quick, just for everyone's knowledge, I guess, just highlight, some people here may know it more than others, but, you know, back when the Tahoe Coalition changed their model and removed itself from what I would say is a smaller nonprofit operating a warm room, to more permanent supportive housing model that they have now, that's really what caused us this concern, as you're highlighting. And so I just want to make sure I have clarity from council. What I'm hearing is the Pay for Service models to come back as presented is appropriate with addressing those new metrics, but you want me and staff to work with Tahoe Coalition for Homeless on, what is a more long-term, suitable solution for warm room service in town?
This is, yeah, this would be in addition to.
I just want to make sure it's in addition to and not, okay.
Yeah, this is not a modification of, I was about to make a motion, so it was not a modification of the motion, but in addition to this also, please, do you want me to put that in the motion, that staff direction in the motion as well?
Please.
Would that be good?
Yes.
Okay, in that case, I can do that. Then I move to pass a motion directing staff to bring back to City Council a contract, each with the Tahoe Coalition for the Homeless and Live Violence Free, based on the Pay for Success model, in an amount not to exceed $40,000 each, and also to reach out to the Tahoe Coalition for the Homeless, and investigate options and possible future funding needs to operate a long-term equivalent of the warm room.
That's clear.
Is that last part good enough for what we were all?
Second.
All right, we've got a motion in a second, and we can vote.
That motion unanimously carries.
Great, with that, we will go ahead and move on to item number nine. This is going to be our Airport Master Plan Implementation Program. Would you like a?
Five-minute break?
Yeah, we can do that.
Thank you.
Before we do that, we will go ahead and take a five-minute break. Nice.
And to call this meeting back to order, we are moving on to item number nine. This is our Airport Master Plan Implementation Presentation, and this will be Mr. Dickinson.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor and council members. I'm bringing forth an update in the Airport Master Plan from the last meeting. We voted on the implementation plan. We had a couple of items that wanted to be added to it, such as electrical charging station. So we've added that to the list. We have also added the cost in the phasing plan. This is a requirement from the FAA before we start our airport layout plan. So I'm going to kick it off with JVA. Tony Davis is going to give you a presentation on the phasing and the cost of these and the new items you guys wanted added.
Hello, my name is Tony Davis. I'm the project manager for Wolfert on the master plan. I'm also joined by Mark Miller, also from Wolfert. Pleased to be here and give you an update on where we are with the master plan. We're at the very tail end, and as John mentioned, we're incorporating some things that you saw last. On August 13th, we presented our alternatives and a recommended development plan. We took your comments and some comments through public workshops, through our project advisory committee meetings, and have incorporated those into a preferred development plan that we'll show you here in a minute. But also, we're including cost estimates and the phase, or recommended phasing of projects throughout the 20-year planning period of the master plan. So we'll just dig right into it. Next slide. Okay. So some of the planning considerations that we've looked at, really just meeting demand, meeting design standards. I'll tell you, the overall intent of the master plan is to develop a plan for the future for the airport to accommodate demand and meet design standards as required by the FAA. So we take that to heart, and we look for that as the end result of the master plan. And I think we've done that. There are other things that we take in close consideration. TRPA review and approval is a very important element here. We've involved them throughout the process. They've been a part of our project advisory committee from day one. We've held our final project advisory committee meeting this afternoon, and we're at the tail end of wrapping things up, like I said. We're in step number four here on this process chart on the right. We're developing the airport layout plan from that recommended development plan that we showed, and we're soon going to be submitting that to the FAA for their review and approval. So identifying some of the facility requirements in the master plan. You've seen a lot of this in some of the previous slides that you looked at, but just to summarize some of the major elements, ongoing maintenance is one of those things that an airport always requires. Pavement maintenance, keeping the airport safe and operational for its users, is top priority. We're also looking to do some other key projects here in the master plan, removing the air traffic control tower. Hasn't been used for years. That would be an FAA project. That was formerly an FAA tower, so the removal of that would be sponsored by the FAA. Removal of high-speed exits and taxiways, reducing the width and redesigning the parallel taxiway would be a long-term project. Relocating the automated service observation system, which is a weather system that monitors the weather on an hourly basis around the clock on the airport. We'd be relocating that to a more ideal location and allowing other things to be developed on that side of the airport currently. It's at the very northern end of the airport apron. We were suggesting to move it on the other side of the runway where it will get more exposure to wind and weather and not sheltered by the mountains, the trees, and such. We'll designate a location for some additional box hangers to accommodate existing demand and reserve an area for large future parking garages recommended by the city. That would serve as a project to enhance transportation here at the airport. Also, an electrical vault to relocate electrical systems from the terminal building out to a designated dedicated facility on the apron next to the terminal building and additional reserved space for aircraft charging for the potential of electric aircraft in the future. Many airports across the country are, at least at this point, identifying electrical charging stations to accommodate that if and when those types of operations come in the future. So I'd like to point out that, you know, this is a recommended development plan. It goes to the FAA as a vision of the airport for the 20-year future. It doesn't obligate the FAA, the airport, or the city to do any of the projects on it, but what it does is it preserves that ability for consideration in the future. Commonly, I'll refer to a project, if an airport wants to build something, the FAA will quickly ask, is it on your airport layout plan? Here, we want to be able to say yes, and we can move on to the next step, whether that be certain environmental reviews, or engineering, or developing a cross cost structure. All of that, we're trying to at least get past this first stage. Next slide, please. So here we see the preferred alternative. And you've seen a lot of this in the previous presentation, but I'll highlight a couple of things that we did add. First of all, the electrical charging station. That's just north of the, what we call the FBO, or fixed based operator here at the airport, right next to the apron. It allows aircraft to be charged while on the apron. It could also serve a dual role in charging vehicles that are in that part of the airport that could have wiring such that it could serve both aircraft and auto vehicles if in the right location and built. Like I said, the location of a lot of these things doesn't have to be in stone right now. Those can change over time when the engineering and the design is done. Some of the other features that we've added, a wash rack was one thing that we learned about that was of interest during the workshop phase where we invited the public to look at our plan. Some of the tenants or users of the airport would like a place to be able to wash their aircraft on occasion. So that's a very simple project, identifying the space on the apron. Here, you've seen it, see it identified in purple. We also have some hangers identified there and grain that allow for the development of accommodating, like I said, some existing needs for based aircraft and transients. The red areas along the taxiway identify pavement that we would demolish. It's not necessary to have a lot of that extra pavement based on the taxiway design standards that we have in place. So in the long term, we'd be able to reduce the pavement width of that and regain some credit for the land that we're basically kind of giving back to nature and abandoning that pavement. We also have two high-speed taxiways that we're removing to reduce the possibility of aircraft taxiing directly from the runway to the aircraft apron. The FAA likes to see that there not be that type of direct access that pilots have to make a physical turn before going from an apron onto a runway to avoid what we call runway incursion. So those are just a quick overview of the projects that we identified in the master plan. If we could go to the next slide. This is just an overall, high-level view of those projects. We're maintaining some width of the taxiway system in 50 feet to allow for snow clearing while aircraft can still get to and from the runway and apron easily, but the majority of the taxiway width could be reduced. So a lot of that red area is, you know, reclaimed pavement area. The orange area here that you see in the middle of the drawing is the parking garage that I'll talk a little bit more in the future slides. This is identifying some of the projects and the funding assistance that we commonly see at airports. Most of the common use, the shared facilities that are used by all of the users, the pilots, the aircraft owners, a lot of that common use type of facility, say like a runway, apron, taxiways, those get funded from the FAA at generally a 90% contribution. Now, that is provided that that funding is available, but most of those projects are eligible. Many projects will get funding from Caltrans and the airport that are funded in the segment of the project that is not funded by FAA. Caltrans and the airport would share the remaining 10%. Some of the non-eligible projects are those that are for a dedicated user or would be revenue-based, say like a fuel farm. That would be, you know, the person selling the fuel would build the fuel farm. Those would not be eligible. That just gives you a basic overview of some of the funding eligibility. So we've identified three phases of development for this master plan. In the short term, or what we say the five-year window, we're showing five projects. Again, the timing of these projects can change. What we've, what we're looking at is trying to spread those projects over that 20-year timeframe based on when we think they might be needed. So first is demolishing the air traffic control tower. Like I said, that's an FAA project that would be funded solely by them. We're relocating that ASOS, or the Weather Observation System that I mentioned earlier, to the opposite side of the airfield, removing the high-speed taxiways and adding some taxiway connectors to improve the efficiency of the airfield and some property acquisition on the south end of the runway to adhere to runway safety area elements on the runway. And the next term intermediate is that next five-year period. We're looking at, just going from left to right, blast pads, those can be reduced in size. Those are just areas off the end of the runway meant to absorb some of the exhaust and prop wash from aircraft, jet wash from aircraft, so it doesn't erode the dirt and sand behind it. We're also looking at the redesign of taxiway pavement, adding that wash rack that I talked about, and then potentially building the hangar development that we have there in Project H. Again, that would be a privately funded project. And then the last slide, we're looking at the parking garage that I mentioned, highlighted here in orange. That would be solely sponsored by the city. That would be somewhat of a transit hub to bring people to the airport, allow them to park their vehicle in a multi-level facility, and then take mass transit to other parts of the city without having to go into the city proper. The other projects here is the electronic aircraft charging station. A lot of these projects are built, you know, on demand, so the timing, the phasing of these projects could change a little bit. That might be one of them. If electronic aircraft comes sooner, that might be a project that moves up in priority. And then lastly, bike path here, we've identified as a project skirting along the boundary of the airport. So all in all, in the 20-year period, we're looking at $41.3 million in projects. There's a current list of projects that the airport has with the FAA. They call this their capital improvement program. There's about almost $30 million identified in that program right now. It includes replacement of a lot of things around the runway, like approach lighting systems, pavement maintenance, some maintenance of this building, apron, taxiway pavement. A lot of it centers around maintaining, rehabilitating, and basically keeping the doors open and lights on type of projects. This slide shows the division of project funding and how a lot of these projects could be split up in their funding. Again, a lot of the projects do, are eligible for federal funding, so a large share of that can be paid for by the FAA. We also get state funding from Caltrans, local funding, that's the airport, and what they would provide, as well as the city. You see the last project in this list on the bottom there is Project L, the parking garage. That really represents the biggest share of funding by the local shares, 27 and a half million for a parking garage. A lot of the other projects, as they relate to the airfield and development of the airport itself, is just a very small share. And then we have a private share, which is funding of things like the box hangers that I talked about earlier. Next slide. So the master plan doesn't end with just an airport layout plan set. It goes through environmental evaluation. Projects themselves are evaluated by NEPO, which is the federal evaluation process, as well as CEQA, which is the state evaluation of environment. Environmental impacts are measured by those groups by project. We'll also be submitting this master plan to TRPA for their environmental review analysis. So that process begins, a programmatic review of these projects starts by the TRPA right after our master plan, airport layout plan is complete. Next slide. This identifies our next steps and where we are in the schedule of the master plan. As you can see, we're at the very tail end here. The end of the year is what we targeted for the completion of our portion of the master plan. We're on pace to do that. We'll be submitting the airport layout plan very soon. That will include a technical report. That is all posted, going to be posted on our project website. All of the chapters of the master plan technical report are posted as of today, as well as all of our project advisory committee meeting presentations and our presentation notes to you guys. So I think that's our last slide. Any questions?
Great, thank you so much. Any council members? Yes, Mr. Middlebrook.
Thank you for the presentation. A couple of questions on the short-term projects. You had that property acquisition, I think it was item E. That's that, that side of the airport. I believe that's owned by the state of California, the Tahoe Conservancy. I was just wondering where the 330,000 came from, because I don't know that, it seems like a lot for that property, and maybe there's an opportunity to just do a land swap with our partners at the Conservancy.
Yeah, that just came from our analysis of existing property valuations in the area. It did not consider necessarily who owned that property.
Gotcha. And then, do you know, and maybe this is a question for John, but the "Welcome to South Lake Tahoe" sign along the highway, is that part of the airport parcel?
I don't believe so. I think it's on a Caltrans easement.
That's on the Caltrans easement, so that's separate of this. So any improvements to that wouldn't need to be in this document?
Yeah, and I think on that land acquisition behind the airport too, where you saw that, we're working with CTC to see if we can just work with them on that RSA project, so we don't have to take their land, and we can kind of work in peace with the easement with them. So I'm kind of working through that process right now.
Perfect, thanks.
Great, thank you. Any other questions from council? Yes, Mr. Robbins.
Where's the ASOS currently? I'm a little unclear on that.
It's on the very north edge of the apron, so you could, yeah, if you could pull up a map, I can show you. Maybe go back one of the slides.
Where the green box hangers are intended to be.
It's near those, yes.
Okay, and you're looking to relocate it to the adjacent to the segmented circle on the windsock?
That's correct. The reason that we're doing that is that those hangers and any other structures in that area would violate what we call the critical area for that ASOS. It requires a 500-foot radius clearance area around it to avoid wind impacts.
Well, a segmented circle and a windsock are notably unpowered devices, and I have kayaked right along, two seasons ago, I kayaked along that fence line. How would an ASOS station handle three feet of standing water?
Well, first of all, I think it does have power.
Yeah, you have power to the ASOS and the windsock.
The windsock is lighted at the segmented circle, so it has power to it. And these are commonly built in water areas or wetland areas. They can be built on piles that would be above the waterline.
So it'll handle the fact that that area floods on the regular?
Because we have stepped-down transformers right there, and then a little segmented circle right now for the power going to the windsock.
Okay, all right. And the ASOS is not going to be negatively impacted by being flooded, by being surrounded, by being flooded underneath it?
No, I don't think so. I think the new systems they have are pretty state-of-the-art. The one we have right now, I think it's over like 30 years old, and it's got like a big mound behind it right now, and it's not allowing the wind direction to come from where it is right now.
Okay, okay.
Great, thank you. Thank you for the presentation. And any, no more questions from council? We'll go ahead and open this up for public comment. Anybody in the room? Yes, Mr. Moser.
Ed Moser, South Lake Tahoe. Just one quick thing. Twenty-seven and a half million dollar parking garage. I wouldn't spend any time, effort, money, looking into that or intention to create it. People aren't going to use it. You know, that's a pipe dream. Use that money to build the city hall. That would be of much greater use. Or else build a parking garage down at State Line, down at the hole, that's where you really need it. You know, we're going to have later here an item come up, having to deal with parking, and you really need probably at least 2,000 spaces down there in State Line. People are not going to come and leave their vehicle here and take a Lake Link or a shuttle or something in the town for their stay here, because they're staying down in the tourist core just to go eat. A lot of them come all the way across town just to come to restaurants to eat and stuff, so, and they're not going to use public transit for that. So that's a pipe dream, and I wouldn't spend any time, effort, money into considering it. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Moser. Anybody else in the room that would like to give public comment on item number nine? Seeing none, we'll look to Zoom.
We'll go ahead and open up our Zoom platform for anyone who wants to provide public comment. I do see we have three hands raised right now. First, we have Ms. Soderstone.
Yes, thank you. Good evening, Melissa Soderstone, South Lake Tahoe. I know this is just a master plan, which means that none of this is necessarily going to be implemented, but I really, with climate change going forward, we really need to think about not having an airport anymore. Private jets are an incredibly huge problem with emissions. Electric planes are a pipe dream. That's not going to happen. We need to be getting people to leave their cars off the hill and find a way to get buses up here, trains up here, a gondola, anything that will get people out of their cars, out of airplanes. It's even more concerning that there's consideration to remove the tower. I think the only reason we would ever consider keeping the airport here is if we were to ever consider having commercial flights return. If we remove the tower, that's obviously never going to happen. Climate changes here, there's much better things we could do with this entire property. We could rewild it, we could turn it into a solar farm. As opposed to a fuel farm, that's very concerning to hear that we would be, we just really don't want to be encouraging private jets coming up here. The noise is a huge problem going right over our neighborhoods all day, every day. It is very, very obnoxious for the residents here and the wildlife. We have planes that go over our wilderness area. You know, there's just very, very, there's a lot of reasons. Truckee has had how many plane crashes? It's only a matter of time until a plane crashes into one of our neighborhoods. I think our master plan for the next 20 years, in the face of climate change, should be to be to decommission this wasteful money pit. Thank you.
Okay, next up, we have Mr. Messina.
Hi, can you hear me?
Yes, go ahead, John.
Okay. Well, I agree with the previous two speakers. I think the parking garage is an insane idea, and I don't think we should be doing any, any improvements at all until they meet the air, the California air quality control standards for vehicles and do something about the excessive noise over our residential There, there are obnoxious twenty-four-hour-a-day jets flying over our house, and I don't think that's appropriate. We need to do like the Grand Canyon where they make the planes fly around the park instead of through the middle of it. One thing in this presentation, if they're always talking about spending money, they're not talking about how little it makes and why the city has to bail them out, and how many, how few planes actually land there every day. Those numbers should be part of this presentation, and I think it's seriously lacking by not including them. So thank you for your time.
All right, thank you, Mr. Messina. Next up, we have Ms. Allen.
Hi, thank you for allowing me to speak. I agree with the previous speakers that I think that a parking garage at the airport is insane. I've been out to the airport many times, and actually, there's plenty of parking out there without any kind of garage facility, which twenty-seven and a half million dollars is outrageous. And I have been around for a very long time and used to work for an airline that used to fly into South Lake Tahoe and land there. I don't see that that will ever occur again, that will have commercial service, which in a way is kind of too bad, but I don't see a garage that's going to facilitate for people to kind of come in, park there, and then try and find their way into the city of South Lake Tahoe. But thank you very much for allowing my comments.
Thank you, Ms. Allen. All right, next up, we have Mr. Asbury.
Hello, can you hear me?
Yes, go ahead.
Oh, thanks, thank you. Appreciate this time to speak. I would agree and disagree with some of the previous speakers. I do agree with the fact that the absorbent amount of, of having a, you know, huge cost for the parking garage wouldn't be fruitful. However, unlike the previous speakers, I do hope that commercial airlines would be able to come here, and I see with the electronic technology and other technologies, as far as air flight, drone capability and everything, that we could be on the cutting edge, where people could come from the Bay Area, Reno, even just over the hill from Carson, and come ski for a day. And then, instead of cluttering up the roads, spinning out people that are not maybe experienced traveling in snow conditions on the roads, they could safely get to and from their destination, contribute, you know, dollars to Ski at Heavenly, for example, go ahead and eat at Vanderpump, and go ahead and make it home in the same day. And so I see that closing down the airport, although it might seem like the airport right now is only for the rich folks, the future has a lot of different avenues that could change that very drastically. And tearing down, I'm aware of that watchtower or whatever, and that seems to be the first stage of this extensive plan to demolish that. I think that would be a disservice to the community, because after that gets demolished, then in order to erect something that would be equivalent or to standards of today's standards of, sorry, for lack of a better term, a watchtower, to go ahead and, and see the flights coming in and out, that would be the nail in the coffin. And so I'd, I'd like to see that with a ninety percent percentile of coming from the federal government, and then just a small portion from the city, that we could go ahead and, you know, we could go ahead and, and benefit from that, both for, you know, visitors to the area, and then people that, you know, would like to spend a lot of money, that would equate to tax dollars to the area. I think that might be something that would, you know, it's already there, their, you know, costs are going up for everything.
Thank you, Mr. Asbury. Your time is up. Next up, we have Mr. Spiel.
Hi, this is Nick Spiel. I wish you would consider reducing the private jet traffic at the airport, but that doesn't seem to be in the cards right now, so I won't dwell on it. I appreciate the consideration of the inclusion of electric vehicle charging. Electric aircraft seems a little bit futuristic, but a technology that's available right here and now is the electric bus, and they just need a charging station at the end of the route. Currently, there's a charger at LTCC, which isn't ideal, because it's in the middle of the route. But a bus charger would be good to include at the airport, because it could be the end of an extended Route 50 across town, and the end of a new trip, a new route to Emerald Bay, and it would be a great place to charge buses between trips. The parking garage would also pair nicely with this, providing a place for people to park their cars out of the way and hop on a bus to Emerald Bay or across town. People have talked about building a parking garage for this Emerald Bay route at the Y, but adding more parking to the Y isn't a good use of space in this town center. I also have a more out-of-the-box idea I hope you'll consider. This plan calls for demolishing the airtra, aircraft control tower. I understand that it's not needed for aircraft operations anymore, but I wonder if it could make for a nice tourist attraction as a lookout. Would there be much cost in keeping it around as a lookout? It could make for a nice destination at the end of a new bike trail that we hope to get to one day. Thanks.
All right, thank you. No additional public comments at this time, Mayor.
Great. With that, we will go ahead and bring this back to council, and Ms. Krieger.
Thanks. I have a couple of questions, actually, that were brought up by that, that I think are for you, Mr. Dickinson, specifically. Can you, can you speak to the ownership of the tower and what uses it can have?
Yes, ma'am. So it's owned by the FAA, and we have no ability to control what they do. And that tower, it has black mold and asbestos in it, and they deemed it unhealthy, and they wanted to demolish it. That was the reason why. They had all the equipment in it, they just can't keep it alive anymore, because it's unhealthy for them to go inside of it.
Okay.
Sorry, quick follow-up question. When's the last time someone's actually been in there operating it?
It's been, I don't know off the top of my head. I'm going to have to look that up for you, but it's been over ten years at least.
Okay, thank you for that, thank you for that follow-up. The second one is, can you tell us what the status is of the, I don't know the right terminology, the FAA permit that would allow us to have commercial airlines here?
The 139 certificate?
Yes.
That would cost a significant amount of money for us to bring it back, but it, you would have to work with the TRPA on that, from the noise and other avenues. It, it costs millions of dollars.
Okay, because we, as a city, we gave up that certificate?
We gave up the certificate, the 139.
Okay, and the, the last time I know you and I talked about this, the number was thirteen million dollars to get it back?
I, I think even more than that.
Okay, okay.
Costs are going up. You're talking about a new fence line you would have to bring, redo the terminal. So you have TSA 1542 requirements, 139 requirements, so your safety areas, they have to be graded out. There's just so many things that go involved in it. I mean, it's, I would never say it's not impossible, you just have to have the funding for it.
Okay, okay, because I know that, that we've talked about all of these things, because I love the tower also, and so I know that in my conversations with you, just like Mr. Spiel, I was like, what can we do with this? And the answer's nothing. Then, okay, I really wanted to make clear the status of the certificate, thank you. And then my last question is, I love the characterization of this is a master plan, much better to put more into it so that then when the FAA, the funder asks, you can say, yes, it's in there, that's a great characterization. So will each of these projects come back to council?
Yes, ma'am.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Krieger. Ms. Wallace?
I also have a few questions for you, if you could just, um, we can't just close the airport. There are significant dollars involved, correct?
So you'd probably, off the top of my head, you have to pay twenty-four million dollars back in AIP funding. Then you have land that's in perpetuity, that is purchased, ADAP, FAP, all other AIP money. These are all federal money, so that's a possibility that you have to pay back that at fair market value and all that land, which can be, I think we have around four hundred acres here, so around there. I mean, give or take.
Could be significant.
Hundred million, somewhere around there, probably.
Okay, and speaking to Mr. Spiel's comment about having a bus charging station here, is there, if something isn't part of the master plan, we could do what if we wanted to put something like that here?
You could do a pen and ink on an AOP to put something on there. We can also put that charging station close to the fence line, which they, they're basically dual charging stations for aircraft and for vehicles, and I could push up to the fence line where they can charge on the other side of the fence.
Perfect, thank you very much.
Great, Mr. Robbins.
I mean, wouldn't there be cost recovery available in the SEZs, because the airport's in the middle of an environmental zone if we were to disestablish the airport? And that, the, the, between the coverage that we would be able to give back up and the, and the, the environmental, the environmental coverage is a pretty highly valued commodity as well.
I don't, I don't know what the fair market value is on that coverage, though. I mean, I don't know what a square foot goes for. I know if you get, if you bank it, I know it goes, it goes into your bank. That's more, I guess, we were talking to TRPA today on the PAC meeting, they were explaining to us that it does go back into your bank.
How much, how much square foot of pavement do we have on all the runways? Do you have that off the top of your head?
One of the slides shows how much pavement we recommend to be removed.
Sorry, you got to speak into the mic.
In total.
One of the slides that we showed shows how much pavement we recommend to be removed. If you want to pull that back up, I can show you.
No, no, that's fine.
I guess the deeper question here that I think that, that you're driving at and that where I'm going with this too, is we, we kind of have a gross, high-level sense of what the costs of disestablishing the airport, but we really don't have a sense of what the, there are revenues associated with doing that as well, not just, the costs are significant, I'm not, not sugarcoating that, but there's also value that we could sell off to offset those costs. And I don't believe we've ever had an analysis of what that would actually entail. So we don't really know how much it would cost to, say, return it to an environmental state of a, you know, stream flood zone area where it's, you know, it's envi, it's, this is incredibly environmentally sensitive land upon which we've built an airport for some reason. That boggles the imagination, but those were the decisions back in the day, so.
There's a new reauthorization bill from the FAA that has a clause in there about closing the airport. Mark, do you kind of want to speak on that, the new reauthorization bill for closing the airport? It's, there's a different animal now with, within it now, so kind of let Mark speak on it.
Good evening, Mayor and council members. I'm Mark Miller. I work with JAVIation Wolpert. I'm based out in Denver, and my background, just, just for reference, for those of you who I haven't met, I spent twenty years working for the FAA, Denver Airport's district office, so similar to your counterparts in San Francisco that John works with. That's, that's kind of my background. So, yeah, closing an airport is, is very difficult, and not speaking for FAA, but, but, historically speaking, they, they are looking at opportunities through the federal grant assistance program. They have their grant assurances, thirty-nine of them, that a sponsor contractually signs on to, to be a public-use airport. So similar to, if you think of, of, of just the roadway system, there's the National Aerospace System, and South Lake Tahoe has a role deemed by FAA in partnership with the city to operate the airport. What John is referencing is there, there are a continued awareness across the country of increased discussions about looking at closing airports. Some airports have, I'll say, historical grandfathered clauses in them, some have nighttime restrictions. Presently, today, FAA would not consider any new restrictions that limit the activity or the opportunity for the public to utilize an airport. So when the discussion of closing one comes up, in the guidance, there was, there, there is language that talks about, one of the things outside of recapturing federal investment in, in, at the infrastructure project, projects, as well as land purchases, is the benefit to civil aviation. So historically, when we see airports close, it, it oftentimes, as a good example, would be closing one airport because the city has a plan to build a replacement airport, where those funds, closing the one airport, are actually still being invested into National Aerospace System in constructing the new facility. It does, does require, if there is a closure, it does require approval from the Secretary of Transportation's Office, through FAA.
Mayor Daley bulldozed Miggs Field in the middle of the night, and that didn't seem to have any negative outcome to Chicago, so, I mean, how, you know, so i- is that really the case, that cities can't just close, close airports? I mean, because it's happened.
Yeah, but as he said, that the most likely midway or whatever you're talking about was replaced by O'Hare, whatever that is, like he, like he said, no, you can't just close it, you've got to replace it with something else, or a new airport, right?
Or have another airport in the region.
Not in the region, but in the city, because we're responsible.
From a system of airports. There are counties, cities across the country that do operate multiple airports. Salt Lake City is one of them, just for an example. They have international, but they also have two, uh, 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 general aviation airports, so they operate a system of airports.
And so does Reno. Reno has too, as well. Ms. Kri, or Ms. Wallace?
To Mr. Robbins' point about the entitlements that would become available, we narrowed our runway more than a decade ago and generated over a hundred thousand dollars in coverage, or a hundred thousand square feet in coverage, and we still have a significant portion of that, that we haven't been able to offload to bring more income into the airport. So it would be very difficult for us to recoup any cost affiliated with closing the airport by selling off those entitlements, because there's so much of it.
That's what I was going to bring up as well, is we haven't been able to sell what we've had, that coverage, the money also has to come back to the airport. Is that, Ms. Stroud, was that a restriction at the time, or would any future coverage removal also, the money need to stay with this parcel?
If, yeah, if the airport is selling off coverage, that money would come back to the airport.
So if we got rid of the whole airport, sold all the coverage, we'd have millions of dollars for the Meadow and nothing, and we couldn't use it for anything else.
You would use that to pay back the FAA, you, you, sorry. You'd use that to offset the costs of the FAA grants.
But we can't sell it.
But we already have enough, and I looked in the presentation, that even the master plan now would remove another three hundred and seventy-seven thousand square feet of coverage, so in theory, the airport, I mean, my brain's not good at estimating those larger numbers, but if it's ten million square feet of, of pavement, you, I don't know that there's ten million square feet of demand for coverage in the basin or the ability to build that much coverage elsewhere.
What about the SEZ stuff, right? That's, isn't that?
That's a little more valuable, but if you're putting ten million new square feet into the market, it's going to, the demand is going to way outstrip, or the supply's going to way outstrip the demand, and the value of it would go down.
I don't know, would it? Like, that's a, that's a, that's a fair, I think that's a fair question to actually get an answer to, and I would, I wouldn't mind seeing, seeing an answer that says, here is, if we, if we chose this, here is the full set of costs and, and, because we, we're going back, we've been going back and forth on this topic a few times, of like, getting rid of the airport would cost a fortune, but it would break, there'd be some opportunity to bring in revenue as part of that to offset it. I, I would just like to see what the numbers actually are, like, what, what are the, what does the data actually say for the costs?
I don't know that we could even come up with that data.
Well, we need support to want to get rid of the airport, and we can find out if there's any support to do that, but at this point, let's move on to Ms. Krieger. Mr. Middlebrook, you already got what you wanted? Great.
Thanks. I think that I was sick.
Thanks. I think that I was sick when this came back, when this came forward the first time. So what I'm seeing is that we've already gone through this discussion and that this is the, whoops, this is the recommended alternative today that we're presented with.
Yes, ma'am. It was voted on last time, and we just added the charging station and the wash rack.
Okay, awesome. Well, I just, I do have one quick question, but I'm super in support of this. So I just want to make that clear. And then my other question, Mr. Dickinson, is for you, because one of the speakers said, the airport is just a budget hole that the city has to throw money into, but what's the real story on that?
Yes, ma'am. We've been self-sustaining for the past two years. We're able to fund all our projects in-house. We don't ask the city for any more. So that's all our airport funded projects.
Great, thanks.
For the public, I want to clarify that, because I, I agree with that. I just wanted to make sure that for the public that's listening, what that means is that the fees, the user fees of the airport, when we say it's self-sustaining, it's not self-sustaining with like, general tax funds, it's self-sustaining with, with the fee. I just want to clarify, wanted you to clarify what that is for the public.
It's a 100% self-sustaining from user fees from the airport. That can be from non-aeronautical to aeronautical fees.
So landing fees, fuel taxes, aircraft fuel taxes, hangar rents, et cetera, et cetera.
Yes.
Okay. I just, I wanted to make sure people listening were clear on that. And then the other thing I just wanted to point out about the, what was it, 27 something million for the, for a parking garage? We're not committing to spend 27 million on a park. That came up from a few commenters. I, I'm not, there's a lot, there's some things I like, there's some things I don't, but regardless of how I feel, I just wanted to clarify for the public that the things like the parking garage, it's sort of, everything in the kitchen sink's been put into the plan, because it would make it easier at some point later if we, if there was a later decision to bring up, to fund it from some set of sources, be them city or grants or anything else. But nothing here actually commits funding to do any of these things. We're not today, for example, we are definitely not today voting to spend millions of dollars on a parking lot or anything of the sort. These are just sets of things that we might do in the future, and it's easier if they're on the plan than if they're not. And I just wanted to, for the public and the commenters who commented on, you know, I also kind of think it's maybe not in the near term necessary to spend 27 million dollars on a parking garage, but we're not doing that.
No, it needs to, all these items on here are, you know, individual projects, and they're not subject to funding at this moment.
They're potential projects.
Correct. And.
Sorry. They're potential projects.
Correct.
I wasn't hitting the button.
And, you know, when the funding comes in the future, if we want to fund them, we can do that.
Right. Okay.
Great. Thanks.
Do you have a question?
I did have a quick question, just because I would like to know, and I know that, as Mr. Robbins just pointed out, but with the parking garage too, would we not, if the city was going to own and have to fund that, we would need to purchase the parking garage from the airport to be able to really qualify for bonding. It needs to be property that we own, and I would think that.
You need a ground lease.
And I would think also, we would, making revenue from it and all that, it would have to be purchased from the FAA. Or from, yeah, yeah, we would need to solely own it. So it's probably more than 27 million when we look at having to repay the grants that went into the airport for that portion of whatever, if it's 10% of the coverage. So I'm just trying to point out that, that potentially it's, it's even more than that. And I guess my, the reason I'm trying to make that point is because it's me that has said, we should look into the why, in part because I believe that if we get to a gondola project, the end of the gondola should end into a parking structure that people can park in to use the gondola, as well as it would house the mechanical, you know, engine or motor for the gondola and those kind of things. So if we have to acquire this property, then acquiring property, let's say the front side of TJ Maxx and making parking in the back of TJ Maxx, we're probably looking at the same cost to having the parking structure at the Y. And again, I know I'm getting a little off of, but I'm just trying to make the point that there, when we look at that project, I do think there's real advantages of having it at the Y and not here at the, at the airport. And then the other question, or maybe really for the public, there was some comments around, you know, electric aircraft is a dream and this and that. Maybe you don't know or you do, but I think electric aircraft is moving pretty rapidly. I know there's, there's aeronautical companies already taking orders for electric aircraft and really looking at air taxi service coming out of Reno Airport or Sacramento Airport into our airport is not very far off from what I'm seeing in the, in the future.
You definitely have a lot of EV talk right now. They just had a convention up in Montreal about three months ago with all the big vendors, Archer, Joby, Loomis, I gotta remember the other ones, but you know, they are getting FAA approval on certain parts of their projects right now. I don't know off the top of my head, but I mean, it is, I mean, it looks like it is coming in the near future.
And then my last point would just be that we didn't talk a whole lot about is how much we have used the airport for emergency services through the Caldo Fire, as well as Daley with CalStar in our air ambulance service that operates out of here.
Yeah, we use them for pretty much everything from, the scoopers come in here all the time. We have, the military brings in the aircraft all the time to fight fires too. So it's, it's, it's a big area for that.
Thank you, Mr. Dickinson. And with that, I will look for a motion.
I would make a motion that we direct staff to prepare the airport layout plan reflective of the recommended alternatives and cost estimates.
I'll second.
Great. Motion in a second, and we can vote.
Motion unanimously carries. Thank you.
Great. And with that, we are going to go ahead and move on to regular new business. This will be item number 10, Arts, Culture and Tourism Public Art Installation Contract Award. And this will be Mr. Stark.
All right. Good evening, Mayor and Council members. I'm John Stark, Director of Parks and Recreation. I'm here tonight to present to you the Arts, Culture and Tourism Public Art Installation Contract Award. That's to Terry Bennett for an art installation that would be located at Lakeview Commons. Some background on this project, in 2021, City Council approved $100,000 earmarked from the American Rescue Plan Act, also known as ARPA, funds to go towards art program funding. Funding would support strategic cultural and arts investments to benefit residents and visitors alike, to enhance the state of arts and culture for our community. A public art installation is one example that provides value to the cultural, aesthetic and economic vitality of our community. The Arts, Culture and Tourism Commission, or the ACT Commission, has been supporting City Council's directive to integrate art into public spaces to create a more attractive, interesting and beautiful city for residents and visitors to enjoy. On May 21st, 2024, the city advertised the public art installation as City of South Lake Tahoe on Planet Bids website for a public art installation at Lakeview Commons, not to exceed $100,000. We had 34 prospective bidders download the documents, and we ended up having 10 that applied. Bidding closed on July 26, 2024, with those 10 proposals being submitted. ACT Commissioners held a special meeting on September 9th, 2024 to review proposals and submit scores. Terry Bennett's proposal titled "Footprints of the Past: Suspended in Time" was selected as the top choice to award the Public Art Installation RFP. Her proposal intends to showcase the unique history of the Lake Tahoe Basin in a sculptural format that integrates the surrounding landscape, including a series of four sculptures made from stainless steel mesh enclosed in stainless steel mesh cubes. There are two locations for consideration at Lakeview Commons. Alternative A is the preferred location with proximity to the lake and in a landscaped island of Lakeview Commons. Alternative B is a less preferred location near the bike path near Harrison Avenue. Each sculpture is a rectangular box, 24 inches long, 18 inches deep, 22 inches high, made of heavy-duty stainless steel mesh, creating a semi-transparent effect. Each sculpture would be mounted on a pedestal. Depending on the location, the pedestal will consist of a 24-inch tall tube at Alternative A or a 40-inch tall tube at Alternative B. The tube will be 3x3-inch stainless steel, and it'll be square, providing an elevated base. The footings of the sculptures will be placed on concrete pads no larger than one foot by one foot. The sculptures will depict a Washoe woman weaving a basket, an old schooner sailboat, a vintage skier and a bear. The sculptures will be spaced evenly, connected by the size of, by life-size human bronze footprints cast from molds of the feet of elders from the local Washoe tribe. Bronze plaques with text and braille will highlight the different sculptures and promote accessibility. A sketch of her proposal and examples from past projects are included in the packet for your review. Staff is requesting Council to pass a resolution authorizing and directing the mayor to execute a contract with Terry Bennett for a public art installation at Lakeview Commons at the location of Alternative A. With Council approval, fabrication of the art installation would begin this winter with anticipated installation at Lakeview Commons in May of 2025. That concludes my presentation. Terry Bennett's joined us on Zoom, and we're both available for any questions. Thank you.
Great. Thank you, Mr. Stark. All right. For council questions, any other, yes, Mr. Robbins?
I'm happy to go second if anyone else has questions. I don't want to bogart the. Yeah, my question is, as best as I can tell, these are like fully enclosed sort of cubes of stainless steel mesh. I'm just curious, like, there is basically a continuous stream of pine needles that falls from everywhere here in Tahoe. And it, my only, I, I think the design is cool, I think the art is cool. My question is purely prosaic about maintenance. So apologies for the boringness of it. It just, I'm curious, like, will pine needles tend to get stuck into the, into the mesh? Or if they fall into the inside of the cube, how are we going to be able to like clean them out? If there's anything you could talk to just about that kind of maintenance with particular regards to pine needles, which are a bit of a thing here?
I think that's a great question. Being a parks guy, that's something that I'm concerned with too. So there's going to be a discreet trapdoor, so to speak, on each of the different boxes, so we'll be able to routinely clear them out if there's any debris. The way that their mesh is designed by the artist shouldn't be too much of an issue to begin with, but we'll be able to do regular maintenance and remove any kind of debris that way.
Okay. So there's a hatch or something going on. Okay, gotcha. Thank you.
Great. All right. Thank you, Mr. Stark. I don't believe there's any other council member questions, so.
Yeah, below her.
Great. We will go ahead and open up public comment on item number 10. For anybody in the room that would like to give public comment on this item, yes, Mr. Moser.
Ed Moser, South Lake Tahoe. Yeah, I've, for decades, you know, proposed and asked money be put forward for, for public art. So I said long ago that just says, landscape in front of your house, if you're going to sell your house, put landscaping in the front is so that it looks presentable. And you don't walk up with three-foot weeds in front of a house, you're not going to buy it. You wonder what the inside was taken care of. And that's how public art is in any town. If you see good public art around, it really, you know, it just stands out and jumps out at you and says something about the community, not only about the creative talent in that community, but you know, what it can, what it can attract. And so any art, any art form is, is a tremendous addition. I just, you know, I don't know, you know, if you've seen the Penny Bear up in Tahoe City, I just, you know, hope maybe we could get something like that someday, you know? A lot of pennies. But my only thing is, with this is pedestals and, and the size of it there, I don't know. You know, I was hoping for 100,000 or something. Maybe we can do something a little, kind of on a, on a grander scale. And then also, I would just, myself, seeing what happens around town with the lights along Lenner Park, you know, I said, don't put those little standing things there. Look what happened to them down by Harrah's outside their security cameras. So something on a pedestal can be susceptible to vandalism, and I would just, you know, have that concern about it. So, but, you know, like I said, any kind of art, you know, appreciate what the murals, we'd like to see some money put into maybe the high school teacher also that has the kids come out and paint the pallet boxes and stuff. I've seen him around town, talked to him, and that's really a tremendous, tremendous project that he does there. I would like to see some funding for that also. Thank you.
Great. Thank you, Mr. Moser. Anybody else in the room that would like to give public comment on this item? All right. See you in a minute. We'll go to Zoom.
We'll go and open our Zoom platform for anyone who wants to provide public comment on Agenda Item 10. I do see we currently have three hands raised. Ms. Ballard.
Hi, everyone. Stacy Ballard. I just want to thank the artist for being online here as well. The commission worked, I think, exactly as it was supposed to. We worked together really well to come up with a consensus on this project that we really liked. We've got some really great applications, so I'm really looking forward to doing more sculptures and, and larger pieces in our city because it is, it does bring more money into our city, and, and that's just been shown all around the United States. So I'm, I'm really grateful that this artist included so many things, including the braille, because you all know I'm, I'm into the accessibility thing. So I'm really grateful for what's going to be going up in May, if you all approve it. And I thank you all for supporting the ACT Commission. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Ballard. All right. Next up, we have Ms. Allen.
Thank you. I want to point out that I think that El Dorado County Beach there and the Commons area have an immense natural artistic opportunity with the lawn, the picnic tables, the barbecues, and particularly the terraced seating that goes down to the beach. And I think that that's what basically enhances the, the basic beauty that we have here in South Lake Tahoe. I'd like to point out that, you know, I spent 14 years on a park and recreation commission in the Bay Area, and in addition, I spent another five years on the Arts Commission. So I have a great deal of appreciation for public art and for enhancing local beauty in beautiful areas. So that said, I just want to say that I don't think that any more statuary will enhance the Commons area. I think that the original installation was a tribute to the Olympic athletes that came from locally here in South Lake Tahoe, which is beautiful. And I just think that everything else that is in the view of, of the lake and the surrounding area would be, you know, obstructed by any other installations. I would love to see, I'm sure that Terry's art is absolutely fabulous, but right across the street, we are building a new park and recreation center and entire installation of that area. And perhaps that money should be spent with installing art in the new park and recreation area on the other side of South Lake Tahoe Boulevard, or Lake Tahoe Boulevard. To me, it, you should enhance the area. The lakeside area is already so beautiful. To put things other than the natural beauty in the way is, is just going to obstruct the, let's see here, the, you know, with the current Olympic champion statuary, I want to point out that when it was originally approved by the city of South Lake Tahoe, that it included only men. And finally, it was the contingency of the, of the community that objected, and finally, they, they included, they changed one of the men into putting a female in that installation. And so I think we need to give a second thought to what we're doing over there in that particular area. And although it doesn't have anything to do with gender, I just think we need to be very thoughtful about that particular area because it is already so beautiful. Personally, myself, I have stopped and just take, took pictures, you know, because it is so beautiful.
Thank you, Ms. Allen. Your time is up. Next, we have Robin Johnson.
This thing? Okay. I agree with the last speaker, I believe it was, that the statue of the Olympians in the Commons area is a magnificent piece of art. And I don't think it enhances it by cluttering it up with other, other minor arts. When I went to the commission meeting on this, none of the pieces came. When I went to the commission meeting on this, none of the pieces came up to the bar set by the Olympic statue. They might be fine in other areas, but I do not believe they should be put in the Commons area. And I think the idea, maybe perhaps installing one near the new recreation center would be a much better idea. So, thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Messina. All right, next, we have Mr. Asbury.
Stick it in, too. Whoa.
Eric here, Eric Asbury here, South Lake Tahoe resident. I'd like to express my concern with an artificial art project blocking the natural beauty of why people come from all, all over the world to visit this place. They, they visit for the natural beauty, not to go ahead and see recycled metal. No disrespect to the artist, but I think it would be better suited for the city to invest that money in some other needs. We do have that rec center that's being built, maybe some placards, and I, you know, just like you go visit, you know, Yellowstone and some of these other parks, they have placards that give a beautiful history of the area in an artistic form. That is a fraction of the cost, so we could spread that out throughout the community in, you know, lookouts to admire the natural beauty of the area as well as have a historical account of, you know, the history of the area. That's all I have to say, thank you.
Thank you. All right, we're going to try Robin Johnson again. Robin Johnson? You need to unmute your phone. Well, Robin, we are unable to hear you. If you'd like, you can email to publiccomment@cityofslt.us and I will distribute your comments to City Council after the meeting. All right, no additional public comments, Mayor.
All right, great, with that, we will go ahead and bring this back to council for any more discussion in our motion. Ms. Wallace.
I understand people's concerns about spending a hundred thousand dollars, but this was funded through the ARPA funds, which we did a participatory budgeting process on, and this was high on the list from, I believe, like, almost a thousand people participated in that process in the community. And so we're just now getting to the point where the Act Commission was able to make a decision and, and fully spend that money, which is good because I think the deadline to spend it is really soon. The Act Commission has had several meetings about this and available to the public to put way in and give input. And just for clarification, I think some people are not understanding where this is actually located. It is not in Champions Plaza. The two locations are, are on either side of Champions Plaza, Alternative A being near, in the area nearest to the picnic tables and, and the terraced seating, and the other is for, on the other side of Champions Plaza, in that one-way street median kind of thing. So I personally am more in favor of alternate number one. And with regards to, like, Viewshed, these are see-through. I think that's, it, it sort of accomplishes all the cool things, having public art while not blocking the lake, looking at a Washoe Squaw, looking at a bear, looking at the other two through the lens of the lake. I think, I, I'm, I believe in public art, so this is exciting for me.
Thank you, Ms. Wallace. Mr. Robbins.
Yeah, is, is Ms. Bennett still on the line? I just had a question.
Go ahead, Ms. Bennett.
Hello?
Hi there. The sketch didn't show the bear one of the four items, and I was just looking in the Exhibit A attachment. It says, you know, native Washoe woman, old schooner sailboat, vintage skier, and bear. I was just curious which, what kind of bear of the two general species of bear that we have around the, in North America, which one were you planning on?
Probably black bear.
Okay.
And it would, you know, like, with rocks as seen around Lake Tahoe, so as the council member pointed out, you would be able to see through it, so it's as if they're standing on the shore and just bringing that nature portion of the art installation and pulling that all together.
Okay, I was just curious because, you know, some of it's historically related, and grizzly bears were endemic to this region until the mid-1800s before, and that's what's on the flag of the state of California, the California grizzly, but they're extinct, they're extinct now. So I was just curious what your, what your thought, what, which kind of bear you were planning for. That's all, I was just curious.
I think a grizzly could be a great, yeah, a great choice, then.
Well, I was just curious what you had, what thought you had on the topic, so.
Great, thank you, Mr. Robbins. Ms. Krieger.
Thanks for all of that conversation. I think that I'm, I think that we should go ahead and pass this right now because this is why we created this commission. They've gone through their exact process, and I think that we should support it, and so I'm going to pass a resolution authorizing and directing the mayor to execute a contract with Terry Bennett in an amount not to exceed a hundred thousand dollars for a public art installation at Lakeview Commons in location A and appropriating and transferring funds from general account, ARPA funding account, to art, public art account.
Second.
Great, we have a motion in a second, and we can vote.
Before we move on real quick.
That motion unanimously carries, thank you.
Before we move on real quick, I'm just curious, what, what plans are there for art in front of the rec center at the moment, if any? And if not, maybe we could give some direction to the Act to give some consideration to options for art in front of the rec center.
All right, well, I would say just if you want to try to do that, ask for a second at the end of the meeting on, on APC.
Okay.
Great, with that, we will go ahead and move on to item number 11. This is going to be our Lease to Locals program update, and this will be Ms. Wackenhat Lomeli.
Good evening, Mayor, council members. Jessica Wackenhat Lomeli, for the record. On October 19th, 2021, City Council adopted a resolution appropriating $500,000 in ARPA funds to initiate a long-term rental incentive grant pilot program, now known as Lease to Locals. Two amendments were made to the program in August 2022 and November 2023 to continue administration and modifications to the guidelines. This included administration of the program until January 15th, 2025. In the past three years, the program has unlocked 52 households, housed 127 residents, and 38 out of the 52 grants issued have been closed and completed. As of today, the Lease to Locals program is the only active program within the city that's geared towards moderate-income residents. On October 22nd, 2024, Councilmember Robin, seconded by Mayor Bass, requested to change in the Lease to Locals program guidelines to include a six-month lease option for half of the grant amount. The requested change would amend the program guidelines for Lease to Locals. In addition, the professional services agreement with Placemate ends on January 15th, 2025. Before the council today is in regards to two of the program components. The first is the overall operation of the program. Because of the contract expiring on January 15th of the coming year, we're looking to either retain Placemate for the program implementation or move the program to in-house implementation. The second is changing the program guidelines to include the six-month lease option for half of the grant. In your staff report, you are also given a chart that has the four different options. And so just to give a quick overview of those, the first was program ends January 15th. As I mentioned, Placemate contract ends and city staff takes over the program management. The second is program ends January 15th. Placemate's contract renews to wind down the remaining outstanding grants and compliance until January 15th, 2026. The third is program continues as is through the end of 2025 with an additional budget allocation for Placemate. And the fourth is that the program expands and includes a six-month seasonal lease through the end of 2025. The options are included to illustrate the two variables, but they can be mixed and matched. So for example, City Council can direct city staff to take over program management and include the six-month lease option in half the grant amount, or we could extend the contract with Placemate and any other one of those options. Today's staff is recommending that City Council pass a motion to, one, extend the PSA with Placemate or move the program in-house, and, two, consensus on a mixture of any of the options presented today. Chase Jamver is here from Placemate also to answer any questions that you all may have. Thank you.
Great, thank you so much. Let's see, with that, we will go ahead and open up discussion with council. Ms. Krieger.
I have a, I have a question, so staff is not recommending an option to us. You're just saying, go for it, guys.
Yes, that's correct.
Okay.
I like go for it, guys.
And I, I will defer to Mr. Thomas if he wants to make a recommendation for this for you all to hear as well.
Yeah, absolutely, and Mayor, members of the council. Basically, we're, the decision is from the council, again, for these two kind of summary things. Continuation of the program? If so, with the continued operation of the Placemate contract that we've had, or bringing the services in-house, and then any additional, the, the changes that was requested at the previous meeting by Councilmember Robinson, seconded. If direction is provided, for example, to continue services with Placemate, that item would have to be brought back along with a separate budget appropriation. As, as illustrated in the staff report, that budget expenditure is nearly spent. So that's, that's really why we're presenting it in that fashion. It would require a separate budget appropriation.
Great, thank you, Mr. Thomas. Mr. Middlebrook.
Yeah, on that question of bringing in in-house with staff resources, I think I voted, was one of the votes on the Housing Master Plan that had about 500 things for you guys to do. Do you currently have the capacity with existing staff to bring that in-house, or would you need additional staff capacity to, to manage that program?
So I, I'm basing my answer on the amount of activity that we've generally seen over the past two years. In the staff report, we've, we've noted that 14, we had, last year, we had 14 grants, this year, we're at 15. So based on those numbers, that could most likely be handled by staff in-house if those numbers were to change drastically for some reason. Perhaps that, that could need be, you know, revisited.
All right, with that, we will, Mr. Robbins.
Could you talk to the potential cost differential? Because, I mean, either we're paying for Placemate staff or we're paying for our staff. You know, if, you're saying based on what the rate of placements have been done so far that it would be able to be done with existing in-house staff? But if, let, let's say we were successful, which is obviously the goal is to be successful here, and we needed to increase support for that, would it be, what would the cost differential be to increase support in-house versus increasing support outsourced?
The current monthly, under the existing professional services agreement with Placemate, it is $7,500 a month for program administration. That's, that's what it costs. If in, services were to move in-house, it would be done with existing staff already employed.
Okay, so, so we would expect by bringing the program in-house, you're anticipating cost savings in terms of, in terms of the met program management aspects, not in terms of the cost of the, of the, of the grants and program, but in terms of the management overhead costs, you would anticipate saving some money by bringing it in-house?
Yeah, the month, the, the.
The $7,500 a month, roughly.
The $7,500 would, would not be spent every month.
So, so even if we needed to bring in the equivalent of a half-staff to do this work, that would still be with, within, to do more, to do much more, you know, then that's, that still would be a wash even at that point because we would, that's the $7,500 we're not spending a month.
Yeah, would you add in our, all of our overhead and CalPERS burden?
What's one saying, a half-staff, not a full-staff, you know, so. So I mean, it's a point five STE, or FTE, like, if it's a halftime FTE cost. That, that would be a lot of applications, right, if that's someone's half-time job, say, something along those lines, so. So just trying to get a sense of, like, what the potential cost of bringing it in-house, and it sounds like, short of this becoming, like, wildly successful beyond our fever dreams, it would likely be either cost less to bring in-house or at least no more.
Yeah, under, under the current operations, we would anticipate using existing staff.
Very good.
All right, unless there's any other questions.
Yeah, that's got a thread going in my mind. Would that then lose access, if we brought it in-house, lose access to the Placemate, Placemate's platform where they do?
Yes.
It's not just the tenant vetting, the homeowner outreach?
Yes, that's correct.
Their tech tools, all that? We'd lose that part of the program?
Yes.
All right, thank you.
How would that get replaced? What would be the plan for replacing that?
So currently, the city does not possess the, that platform. We don't employ that same level of technology. The plan would, would most likely be conducting it kind of similar to what we do with our other programs, for example, our rental assistance programs and our housing monitoring programs and things like that, it would be done through kind of the existing platforms that the city operates, the outreach redo, the website, so forth, things like that. Regarding specific technologies that Placemate possesses, incorporates, again, we have a representative from Placemate that could maybe speak to those if, if the council wishes.
But we wouldn't be going completely cold with nothing to, like, no website that we could have applied. We have the ability to have online form application, that kind of stuff. We can do that in, with our in-house resources, is that your assessment?
Yeah, exactly, under the city's website, yeah.
Okay.
All right, great, thank you, Ms. Lomeli. And with that, we will go ahead and open up public comment on this item. This is item number 11, the Lease to Locals program update. Anybody in the room? Yes, please come forward and state your name for the record.
Hello, my name is Jill Teakle. I'm a resident, not of the city, but of the county, and kind of passionate about housing for locals and have worked with several nonprofits. I just wanted to bring up the question, or have you guys have the conversation, if you haven't already, in terms of adding six-month leases to the program. It seems that those are addressing seasonal workers, that people who truly live here full time are, from what I hear from property managers, have no interest in six-month leases anymore. They were popular 10 years ago, but in the last five years, the struggle to be moving out in six months and finding something else is highly undesirable. And I think I, I also have the question of whether you have consulted with local property managers who could probably provide some information about what, what might help with housing local workers. It's their job.
Thank you so much. Anybody else in the room? Yes, Mr. Moser.
Ed Moser, South Lake Tahoe. She, previous speaker here, and just mentioned about the six-month leases. One of the problems I hear from, from people, landlords, and experiences in my neighborhood is, you know, with long-term and then short-term, seasonal workers is, is damage, you know, they don't want to do it, just because people will tend to trash the place, you know, they're here for part-time, six months, five months, four months, and seasonally, and, you know, motel owners can tell you and give you a lot of harrowing tales. So, you know, that is a problem. It's a two-pronged sword of landlords not upkeeping the place and then also tenants not taking care of them and leaving them in disrepair, and ends up, you end up in a losing proposition. But that is something that's neat, and that's, you know, one reason why I think, you know, Motel 6 should be saved, and that's a great place for short-term seasonal workers. You know, there is a lot of them stayed down in the whole area that were torn down. You know, there is a lot of them stayed down in the whole area that were torn down. There's, you know, a number of places there that were for seasonal workers, and they could walk across the street and work at Heavenly, or over to the casinos, or at some of the motels. So, you know, that's a big part of the solution, I believe, and should be looked into and should be saved and used for short-term rentals, you know, part of it, you can, since there's several buildings, you can use part of it, some, half of it for seasonal workers and half for full-time employees here. Thank you.
Great, thank you, Mr. Moser. Anybody else in the room that would like to get public comment? Yes.
Hi, I'm Bob Poet, and talking about the Lease for Locals Program, the half-year, half-grant program, option number four on the program. I know that there are critics of the Lease to Local program, that it's not big enough and it's not fast enough, and it's not funded enough. And one critic even said that the program was moot. But, you know, I looked at Placemate this morning, and yeah, it was 52 units, residential units that were leased, and 127 people that it helped, so those people, for those people, it made a difference. And I think we're all, we've all heard that story about the little girl and the starfish at the ocean, so I don't have to repeat it. Good. But those people were helped, so this is a good program for the good that it does. And if we expand the option to include six-month leases, then it has the opportunity to be good for those people, too. There are any number of, Tahoe's a transient place, and people do tend to stay here for short periods of time. They need, they need places to stay, too, so it'll work for some people. Now, if it works for only a handful of people, and only a few properties, then it'll be good for that amount of good. There's no risk, there's no extra funding, we're using the funding that already exists. So if nobody answers the call for a six-month lease, we've lost nothing. So, but there's a bigger, a bigger reward on that, and that is that we're starting to now get into a new phase, post-election phase, that brings people together. And this is a baby step, perhaps, Tricia Yearwood saying it, little victories, I'll take them. As for the other portion of it, the Placemate, are you happy with, and this is a rhetorical question, and I don't, I'm talking from ignorance here, are you happy with Placemate? Is it worth the $90,000 a year? Is that, is that what it adds up to, something like that? If it is, then keep them? And if not, you got an all-star team just waiting here. You got Jessica, Monica, Lydia, Zach. They can do it. I got, I got faith in them. Okay? So, thanks. Take care.
Great, thank you so much. Any other, yes, Mr. Jaren.
I am Chase Janveren, general manager of Placemate. I'd like to address a couple of the topics that came up today, or tonight. I've already submitted a public comment in writing that provided additional granular detail to the great staff report that's already been provided, but a couple of things that came up regarding seasonal leases. In both of the Similar Lease to Locals programs we run in Truckee and East Placer County that do allow for seasonal leases, approximately 25% of total participants are seasonal. And the concept there, I think to address one of the concerns that was presented, is the J1s or seasonal workers that come to town, if there aren't seasonal leases available, they will take a full-time lease, taking up a home that some of the long-term, full-time locals would be otherwise taking themselves, right? So we're giving the seasonal employees an option to allow for the long-term homes to remain open. That's point one. And then the other point, last year and this year, we're doing approximately 15 participants a year. If you look at the data that I gave you, we've had just about 500 total leads that's converted to about 50 participants. That's about a 10% conversion rate, right? So the, the concept of taking it in-house, I would just caution that 15 participants is 150 homeowners that we've talked to. In order to talk to those 150 homeowners, there are multiple emails, texts, phone calls just to have those conversations. So the results is the tip of the iceberg of the effort that's put in. Thank you.
Great, thank you. Any other, anybody in the room for public comment? All right, seeing none, we'll go to Zoom.
Yeah, we'll open up our Zoom platform for anyone who wants to provide public comment on Agenda Item 11. I do see a couple of hands raised. First, we have Mr. Spiel.
Hi, this is Nick Spiel, calling on behalf of Locals for Affordable Housing. We would like to ask that the city move forward with continuing and expanding the Lease to Locals program, incorporating creative solutions to incentivize more occupancy of the 44% of housing units that sit vacant for the majority of the year. I understand that this is tricky without a funding source, now that the COVID stimulus money has just about run out, but we hope that you can find a way to make it work. Thank you.
All right, thank you. All right, next up, we have Mr. Asbury.
Hello, Eric Asbury here. I have looked at several of the programs that have gone, that the city has implemented, and I feel that the, this is the worst. It's just a waste of money. It's been proven over the last short of three years that it has been unsuccessful, and ultimately shown us that people that are willing to rent their homes out, short-term, long-term, are willing to do so on their own behalf, they don't need government to let them know that it's okay to do so. And the ones that don't want to do it are not doing it. So I feel that the numbers presented are pretty flawed in that I know a lot of people in my neighborhood, the Sierra Track neighborhood, for example, they've rented for a week or two weeks and found out that the placement service was not, it didn't suffice, and they went back to renting on their own. And so I would say that spending the money towards other housing projects that are more fruitful, like the, you know, Sugar Pine by the Y, which has not been fully funded yet, but is looking to be a very positive, successful project for the community, we can go ahead and focus those $110,000, $111,000 a year towards projects that are looking more fruitful rather than this project that's been close to three years in functioning and has really not amounted to much. Thank you very much.
Thank you. There's no additional public comment to this time here.
Great. With that, we will go ahead and bring this back to council. Mrs. Wallace.
So I have always been in favor of the Lease to Locals program. I felt like it was just one other piece of the puzzle that we could fulfill, and I, although it has helped a limited amount of people, as Mr. Poet said, it helped those people. And, and sort of the starfish story, I love the starfish story. Knowing that this was coming up on the agenda, I spent a lot of time thinking about this, and, and I have adult children in my family, somebody who is trying to move back into the area, and, so, a couple of things. One is, is if we are subsidizing rent for a year, or six months, or however long, at the end of that, they are in a house that is mostly unaffordable to them, because we have done the subsidizing for them. So what I would like to talk about in this realm is possibly doing something slightly different, and that is move-in grants and deposits, because that seems to be the area that people really struggle with, coming up with that large nut at the beginning of moving into a place. The deposit, the first last, or whatever the new law is, all of those things is, is pretty prohibitive for people to move into a house. And we could do something where it's revolving, and so it renews the amount of money available, and I think it might have more impact for the locals. And as much as I think that temporary workers are important, we couldn't survive without the J1s and those type of things, those are temporary people. And maybe I'm going to say something a little controversial, but they're not our constituents. They are people who are moving in, then moving out. We want the people who are living here and becoming a part of our community, participating in our commissions, participating in our nonprofits, and those are the people that are going to be here for a much longer stay. And I would like us to consider revising a lot more than whether or not we're going to stay with Placemates or not.
Thank you, Ms. Wallace. Mr. Robbins.
I definitely would like to have, at a later time, a conversation on deposit assistance. That's, that can be good, it can also be challenging, because much like mortgage-down payments, you're generally required to have that money as a way to show that you can make rent payments. So if you get assistance for that, that can be, that can, sometimes that may or may not be problematic. But nonetheless, I think it's worthwhile for consideration, because my understanding of that is not 100%, and I would like to have an informed discussion with a staff report and comparisons to other project, to other programs in other municipalities. I think that'd be a good thing to do at a later time, maybe sooner rather than later, but at an available time in the, in the not-too-distant future, because I think that's worth, worth On the other hand, as for the issue in front of us, the two parallel questions, one about insourcing versus keeping the outsourcing, despite my line of questioning, which was meant to sort of draw out some, some of the relevant details, I'm truly agnostic as to, as to that. I'm, I'm happy to take staff's recommendation on what they think makes the most sense and would be the most cost-effective. I don't have a, I don't have a dog in the fight, so to speak, about insourcing versus outsourcing. I'm, I'm happy to defer to staff on what they think makes sense either way. You know, generally, I would like to save money when we can save money and plow that back into the program to be more efficient, but maybe that would be more hassle than it's worth. I don't, staff has a better sense of that than I do. So I'm, on that topic, I'm, I'm happy to defer to that recommendation with, maybe I would slightly lean towards insourcing, because I generally would prefer that, but not a strong opinion.
Mayor Bass, I may really, sorry, councilmember Robbins, but just want to clarify, we started a RAP program, the Rental Assistance Program, where we give deposits in first month. We allocated $200,000 a few months back, and it's a program we're actively managing and deploying in our housing services over the last six months.
Then perhaps the question would be, can we get an update on that program in the near term? But nonetheless, sorry, on the second issue, the half for half, temporary seasonal workers are very much our, everybody who lives here is our constituent, whether they live here for three months, six months, or 10 years. People who come here and call this place home, be it for decades, or be it for a winter, are people that we are charged to look out for their best, for them, and to, and to represent. Not only that, the businesses that those people support are also in our community, right? So making sure that there is available housing for our many, many businesses that need seasonal workers is, even if you don't subscribe to the fact that the people are our constituency, which I think is sufficient, clearly, you know, part of our charge is to create an economic environment that is functional, and in a tourist town, that means seasonal workers. And to, to the comment that was made, I think that's, which was probably the most prescient, is that the J1s and the seasonal workers are going to compete for the same marketplace of housing as people that are looking for long-term housing. And if a house is available for either a six-month or a one-year lease, and whoever gets there first is able to put down an offer, then you've got the same group of people angling after the same housing. And so creating a six-month option that is more, more focused towards seasonal workers makes an enormous amount of sense in that regards. And lastly, I think the way this program has, has come, has operated to date, I think it made an enormous amount of sense that for the first few years, it was only one-year leases. I don't think it was an error to not have a six-month option in the beginning. I think it made the most sense to have the one-year lease as the requirement for the first several years of the program. Because if you're a landlord, a potential landlord, and you have the option to go six months versus the option to go for a year, you're going to be more, probably be more likely to choose the six-month option here, so you can use your house in the summer or whatever. But by having the first several years of the program be year leases only, we've kind of gotten everybody who would participate in the year lease program has already kind of done so, right? So, so the people who are, who would be willing to engage in the program and take the subsidy and rent for a year have done that, and what's happened now is we're kind of trailing off in the number of new applications that are making their way all the way through. And so that's why I think now it makes sense to now expand it to include a six-month option, to get more people who might not consider a year lease, because that was the only option, to now have the option for a shorter lease, because we're not, it's not going to come at the cost of the, of the full-year leases, of the full-year landlords who have already had the option to be in the program for the last three years. So we've basically gotten those people already. So I think that goes to the point where I think the risk, as much as, if there is one, of adding a six-month lease is negligible at this point, because we've, we've gotten the year-long people now already, and that's come to a trickle now. So now it makes sense to expand it to a little more option. And seasonal workers are every bit as much a part of our regular community, they've, they've come and gone from our community and been part of our economy for as long as anyone else has lived here. And so making sure that we can try to have a housing situation for them that is, that is safe and equitable and humane, I think is very much something we should be doing.
Great, thank you, Mr. Robbins. Ms. Krieger.
I really appreciate this discussion, but I think that what it points to is the fact that there's just a million different circumstances, you know, there's just so many, and it behooves us to try to help as many people as we can, the 100, you know, the 127 people, the six people that might be able to take advantage of this. And I don't usually do this, but I just want to tell a very quick story about a C, about a J1, because anybody can come here and then try and stay, right? And I know that, that that requires, well, in this circumstance, it required a change of circumstance, but, you know, transient people come here, short-term people come here, and then they do stay. And so I think that what, if we want to try and build as inclusive of a community as we can, I don't think that, that the option of six months hurts us at all. And I'm really happy that you brought up the, the security deposit thing, which is in play, and, and that helps, you know, a different group of people. And so I feel like that was how we started all of these housing things, was with this in mind, to help, to develop as many different programs as we could, to help as many different people as we could. And so I feel confident in doing that, so I'm just going to throw it out. My two things that I would go for here are adding the six-month option, maybe a couple people will do it, and bringing the program in-house.
Great, thank you, Ms. Krieger. Mr. Middlebrook.
Agree on the six-month option. I don't, I feel strongly about not bringing it in-house. I know staff said that they could do it, but knowing how much that program works on, I'd rather have their time spent on writing grant, grant applications, working on other housing projects. I think the platform that Placemates brings, you know, has value to it. As Mr. Janveren said, the amount of people they have to vet to get to that 15 number is a lot of work. And, you know, I think Placemates, having been to their website before, is, is a nice, well-done website that I think looks very professional, not knocking the city's website, but it looks like a government website. And if we're going from a nice, interactive web platform to, you know, PDF forms, no offense again, PDF forms buried on a Granicus website where other commoners already said earlier in this meeting that they can't find things on the website, I just think it's a lot of value that we're missing from not being on the Placemates, and again, would rather have the housing team's limited time, you know, spent on other items and bigger, bigger chunks of housing grant applications and things like that. So I agree on the six-month part, I think we should keep it with Placemates, though.
Great, thank you, Mr. Middlebrook. And yeah, for me, actually, coming into this, I was thinking in-house may be a better option, but now hearing and working through this conversation, I can kind of see, especially with the platform, I think that's a real consideration, and then knowing that it was 150 people to get to 50. And then knowing that it was 150 people, to get to 15 also shows you the amount of staff time possibly that we would be taking away. One thing that was brought up in public comment that I also agree with, and talking to Mike Phillips and some of the other real estate folks, I think there are real things that we should consider putting resources into. I know that there's been talk around, you know, if something could happen for the city to help landlords when they do have legal troubles with eviction and with some of the issues that can happen that make fear for these homeowners to want to rent to locals, I think is something that we should explore. Again, I think that reaching out to the real estate community and really working with them as they know both sides of it, from the property owner that wants to rent the property, also to the tenants that, that have challenges. What the city can do in funding some of those kind of efforts, I think, can help us open up that pool of other, you know, long-term leases. I also agree that going ahead and looking at the six-month, you know, opening it up to the seasonal workers, as Chase pointed out, that's being done on the North Shore and, and can provide benefits. I also so agree with Ms. Krieger that hopefully those people decide, hey, this is Tahoe, and I thought I was only going to be here for six months, but I stayed for 50 years. And how much do we hear that story? I, I think we hear that quite commonly, when people show up into town and, and say, this is the best place in the world, so I'm not leaving. So yeah, I'd like to see us do that. I can support both of those things, and yeah, those are my comments. So with that, Mr. Robbins?
Yeah. Um, just my question again. Given my agnosticism, not gnostic, agnosticism on insourcing versus outsourcing, if we were to maintain the outsourcing, I mean, I, I was kind of with Ms. Krieger, I'm kind of like leaning towards insourcing, but I'm not, I see, I see where you guys are coming from, like having a nice website, if there's a lot of back and forth that's involved in screening tenants, like, I get that too, because it takes the workload off. But it's not cheap. I guess it's not super expensive either. But would there be an option to structure the contract to have it be more of an incentive-reward system where, right, rather than a flat fee per month, the fee was, if like, there was no sign-ups in some three-month period, you know, quarterly or half, every half-year, whatever, some period, that the fee is adjusted downwards or upwards based on how many people signed up, just so that there's an incentive alignment between the contract costs and the, the contract payments and the benefit for us, the customer? Would that be possible?
If that were the direction of council, I, I would recommend that, if, if that was the decision to direct staff to have that discussion, potential negotiation, and bring back, if possible, a PSA reflective of that. It sounds like this would be kind of a pay-for-success structure previously discussed.
I would be much more comfortable if we were to maintain outsourcing, if it were not a, not simply a flat fee per month, no matter what happens, but if there was a, as you said, a, a contract structure where we had like a pay-for-success kind of scale. And not that it would be zero if no one signs up, or something, there'd be some base level presumably, but go off, negotiate it in that way, and come back to council with some kind of structure that provides an incentive, an incentive fee structure. What do you guys think about that?
Well, I would say let's wait for the rest of comments from council, and then we can talk about that in the motion, if you don't mind. Ms. Wallace?
I would just like to, I, I'm okay with all of this. I think that it's been a successful program, and I'm actually not super opposed to going to the six months. I still go back to the fact that I think that when we subsidize through this program, that we're subsidizing unaffordability. And, and that concerns me in this market, because I remember when we were originally talking about this, that we were trying to get people in, and then they would then have a long-term house to live in. Whereas if we're subsidizing unaffordability, that is not the case. And it, it just puts us back in the same spot as we, as the person was a year before or six months before. And I agree, a lot of, a lot of people come here, they think they're going to be here for a season, and they move here and they've become amazing parts of our community. I just, I'm, I'm concerned with subsidizing unaffordability. And in our housing market, that is a problem for, for people. I wouldn't do this. I am a renter. I stay where I'm at because I have lived there a really long time, and it's affordable for me now. And for me to move, I would not ever consider a program like this, because for a year, I'd be okay. It's, it's something to think about.
No, I think you actually, I, I think you bring up a very good point, because the, the reality is if it's only help on the front end, meaning the security deposit, the first and last rent, you still have to pay attention to what is my monthly rent going to be, the first month that I, I have it due, where it's not subsidized through that whole 12-month period? I think that's a good point, and I would ask Mr. Janren, have you seen where your program could essentially do that, so that instead of subsidizing the rent for the 12 months, you're just subsidizing the, the cost to move in, essentially?
Yeah, so, so I think there's a couple of things there is, one, frequently what we hear from property owners is they're not concerned with maximizing the income of the property, they're concerned with potential damage to the property. And we'll tell them that, you know, you can think of this incentive as an extra-large security deposit, right? Except you're going to get it whether there's damage or not. And that gets them off the fence of trying to decide what to do with the property that they haven't been using.
Right.
And then two, as far as affordability, obviously, we, there is some affordability controls with the program, there's a blanket rent cap that maximizes the rent that can be charged. In, throughout the life of the program, 80% of South Lake participants, the property owners, continue to rent long-term even though there is no additional incentive.
In the next year.
That's right, in the, in the following year. And looking at year two, that actually went up to 93%, like virtually all of them renewed. We did not get any feedback from any of those tenants saying, hey, the landlord just increased our rent substantially. And I think, you know, also, participants of the program, they still have to abide by the California Fair Housing Act, right? They can only increase rent by so much.
Yeah, okay.
Non-unsigil family homes.
Okay, well, yeah, maybe.
Will a tenant still have to qualify based on income? As far as a lot of people when they're leasing a house are going to look at, what is the tenant's total monthly income and the percentage of that they can pay, 30% to 50%, whatever that is? Is that still kind of how this program works?
Yeah, there is still an income cap. We never select the tenants on the property owner's behalf. It's always up to the property owner who they rent their property to. So ultimately, it's their decision who, who they rent to, taking income into account for their own qualification.
Right. And I'll, and I'll clarify that this program has existed for three years, as mentioned in the staff report. Every year, it's been brought to council, there's been some well-thought, you know, well-conceived kind of additions, modifications. One of the additions the council made previously was adding a local work requirement, for example. So that's also, I just want to remind the council, that's also in the guidelines, too. You have to work in the area.
Great. Thank you, Mr. Thomas. Mr. Robbins?
Well, my question, sorry, my question was going to hit the button for, my question's going to be what fraction of units renewed the rent in the subsequent year, which goes to the question of, of longer-term affordability, or at least goes partly that way. It's affordability at least in the second year. And you're saying that that number's actually quite high, that, that ratio's quite high.
When this program was created, it, it was discussed that this is somewhat experimental. And one of the hopes was is that there would be a long-term kind of behavioral change, that people would see the benefits of long-term rental. And it was always discussed that while this initial incentive to unlock the house is for one year, that there was always hope to have this kind of long-term change. We seem to have seen that, you know, the idea is that people enjoy their tenants and they continue. So that is a, a positive outcome.
I, I do generally agree that one of the problems, or one of the counter-effects of rent subsidies, is that it makes people able to afford higher rents, which therefore drives up rents, because the demand will go up as a result. But in this program, I think it seems like it's structured a little more along the lines of the, the, the fee, which it doesn't go to subsidize rent, at least not directly to subsidize the tenant's payment of rent. It goes to the landlord, right, who then agrees to rent the unit for a, for at least, currently at least a year at some agreed-upon rate. And then it seems like the, 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 you know, four to eight, whatever, thousand dollars is an incentive to like actually get over the hurdle of getting into being a landlord, of getting into renting and deal, you know, you got to get up there, you might need to move some, some of your personal possessions out, you might need to do whatever, it's, it's that, it's getting over the hump of that threshold of, of incentivizing someone to getting, getting into landlording in the first place, because we're not giving money to the tenant month to month to month to subsidize their rent, right? This is a one-time upfront payment, well, I guess it's spread out over a few quarters, but it's an upfront, it's a upfront payment to the landlord.
Half is given upfront and half is given at the completion of the, of the year lease.
Yeah. So it's not, it's not really quite the same. I understand that like fungibly, you know, you're, you're, you're injecting money on either side of the transaction, kind of, in a, in a, in an economic theoretic sense, it doesn't really matter, but realistically, I think it's not structured as a, as a rent subsidy program, it's structured as a landlord incentive program.
Great.
Based on the things that both Mr. Janren and Mr. Thomas have said, I feel a lot better about my concerns. And with that, I'm going to make a motion that we renew Placemates' contract for 12 months and amend the lease-to-locals program guidelines to allow six-month leases through the end of 2025.
I wanted to make a motion. That's all, I'll say it.
So, all right, we've got a motion in a second, and we can vote.
Sorry, hang on a second. Can we, if we wanted to do, sorry, just a moment. If we wanted to do a direction to do an incentive-structured contract, that should need to be in the motion, I presume, right?
I would recommend that the motion would direct staff to bring back a, a professional services agreement with Placemate for whatever.
For an incentive-struck, with an incentive, with an incentive-structured.
An incentive-structured or not, what, either way, but I would make the motion to direct staff.
Hold on, Mr. Mayor, we do have a motion in a second on the table, so I would suggest voting on that, and then if there's going to be a second motion, we can do that after.
Sorry.
Let's go ahead and vote.
Oh.
That motion carries.
I wanted to.
All right, with that, we're going to take a break. We will come back at 8:40.
Doesn't mean you can't do a second.
Meeting back to order. I believe we are still going to be real quickly on item 11.
Yeah.
With a second motion possibly.
Yeah, I wanted to make a motion to direct staff to execute a professional services agreement with a fee for performance structure to implement the lease to locals program. Is that sufficiently specific?
That works if there is a second.
Okay. Does anybody else want to? Is there a second?
Right now, that motion fails for a second. I can say that staff should possibly, if you can have them talk and then if that's supportive, maybe bring that back at a second time. Because that wasn't in the staff report. It means that. So with that, we will go ahead and move on to item number 12. Establish residential parking permit zones in the Lakeside residential area. This will be Mr. Anush Nijad.
Good evening, Mayor Bass. I'm members of the city council. For the record, my name is Anush Nijad, Director of Public Works. The item before you is a consideration to establish a residential parking permit program for the Lakeside residential area. As a background, on September 12th, 2023, the city council adopted an ordinance to allow residential parking permit programs in the city of South Lake Tahoe. The ordinance allows the implementation of a residential parking permit in areas that would substantially impact non-residence use of velo parking spaces, which can create unreasonable traffic hazards, noise, and other nuisances. The city implemented the first residential parking permit program in the Heavenly Valley area, which has successfully reduced or eliminated parking impacts for the neighborhood. On October 12th, 2023, the city received a formal request for the residential parking permit program from the Lakeside Park Association. The association feels that during the summer months, especially between Memorial Day and Labor Day, there are parking impacts due to state line casinos and golf tournament in the area. City staff, including Ms. Willer, the code enforcement officer, and I met with the association last summer to evaluate the traffic and parking impacts. Based on our analysis, a city concurs with the association's opinion that a residential parking permit program will be helpful in this area. Here's a map that shows the proposed recommendations. The residential parking permit program will be on one side of the roadway, on Hill Road, Sunrise Lane, Greenwood Road, and Azure Road. However, due to the narrow roadway widths, staff also recommends no parking on the opposite side to allow emergency vehicles to pass and avoid any obstructions of the roadway and create unsafe conditions. City staff has communicated with the Lakeside Association and they concur with the recommendation. Ms. Judy Goddard, the operations manager, is attending this meeting, hopefully on the Zoom call. And if you have any questions for her, she will be able to provide input or to answer any questions. The estimated cost for implementation of this program is $25,000 based on the cost that we recently implemented in Heavenly Valley area. Lakeside Association has agreed to contribute $7,500 to the program. However, we need an additional $12,500 to be able to fund the purchasing of the signs and installation of the signs and also for the administration of the program. The signs will be posted for this restriction between June 1 and September 30. In my opinion, that this program will address the nuisance and parking impacts and will be beneficial to the residents of the area. I would be happy to answer any questions that you may have. And again, Ms. Goddard is online to answer any questions.
Great. Thank you, Mr. Nijad. With that, we'll bring it back to council. Actually, before we do, it was brought up to me that possibly there's a mistake just in the staff report here with the address numbers and them being on the wrong side. And I don't know if you guys looked at that. Because it was just brought to me and so I didn't have the time to fully look at. I guess the address numbers we're using are for western sides or, yeah?
So we're recommending on the western side, the yellow, to be a residential parking permit.
Okay.
And on the other side is the no parking.
Okay. Okay. With that, I will go ahead and look to council for any, excuse me. Mr. Robbins.
The net cost to the city was $17,500, correct?
Correct.
What is the anticipated revenue from tickets and other fines?
I have.
I asked Chief Stevenson to give some thought to that, so he could probably give us a, a real rough estimate because it's really hard to guarantee what that estimate would be, but.
Just based, is that on? Hello? Based on the Heavenly, it is going to be a guess because we haven't implemented the program. We don't know. It's smaller than the Heavenly Valley area. I believe this last winter, we had pretty good compliance up at Heavenly. We wrote about 47 tickets in that new RPPP near Heavenly. If all of those tickets were held up and paid, it would have been about $11,000. I think we're going to end up collecting about half of that. Just because it's a new program, there were a lot that were mistakes and other things. But so, I don't know if that helps, but that's what the Heavenly one did.
Heavenly will probably bring in about six grand, something like that. And this area is about half the size, so maybe three grand would be a reason, would be a plausible number, I guess would be.
Tough to say.
Okay.
Great. Mr. Middlebrook.
Thank you, Mayor. A couple of questions. You mentioned the parking restrictions would be in place June 1st to September 30th. Was there a reason for not starting earlier in May to capture Memorial Day weekend? Because the June 1st would be after Memorial Day weekend, which is typically the start. So something like a May 15th versus a June 1st?
We went back and forth what is the best period. We wanted to minimize the duration. So initially, actually, it was between June 1st and September 1st. But then the association requested that we extend it to September 30th. And I think that the reason that we picked June 1st is a kind of a easy date that people can remember. So that was the reason.
Great. And then I noticed in here that the, the fine amount for the illegal parking is $300. Maybe more of a question for Ms. Stroud. Is that allowable under state code? Because in a similar vein of Emerald Bay, we were on, I've been told by Eldorado County that they've raised that to 150, and that's the largest that they're allowed to charge per state law. So with this being 300, are we allowed to charge that much?
Yeah, I can't speak to the county's reasoning on that. But generally, under the vehicle code, we are allowed to charge tickets and are supposed to look to what neighboring jurisdictions are doing to make sure it's not way out of line. And we did do that when we raised our parking ticket fees in, in the Crescent V lot and then for the Heavenly Valley neighborhood. So this is consistent with those.
Great, thank you. And then, Mr. Nijad, on the map, the, the red line that's the lakeside of, is that Sunrise, closest to Lake Shore Boulevard. Those have the, the separate parcel numbers listed out, but those are not developed. Those are empty parcels. Was there any consideration on that, no parking zone, given that that is really the closest to the lake and there's not houses in there, treating that one strip of red differently than the rest of the neighborhoods, given the proximity to the beach and the fact that there aren't actually homes on those parcels?
Yes. Again, the reason that we recommended no parking on one side is the narrow roadway widths. They usually are between 19 to 23 feet. And again, I was concerned with emergency vehicles being able to pass. If we establish residential parking on one side, which is now legal for people to park, to make sure that, you know, other vehicles will be able to pass.
Gotcha. And then for that area, I mean, obviously, I don't know off the top of my head if that's just empty and vacant or if it's, you know, best management practices, stormwater infrastructure. But was there any thought or consideration to turning that into more formalized beach parking, given that the casinos are now paid parking, we're restricting more parking here, we're restricting parking everywhere, but not providing new parking? We're just kind of moving the problem to different places? And the folks on these streets are going to be great, but the folks just, just west of them, after Park Avenue, they're going to get more people parking. So we're keep restricting parking, but not providing alternatives and not providing new transit and not providing other parking spots. So like, was there consideration on turning more formalized real parking in that area? And then two, was there any consideration to a paid parking program?
So actually, when we had the discussion with the Lakeside Association, there were concerns about the parking overall in the state line area. We're doing a complete street feasibility study. And I think that in the staff report, I had, I put a statement that the overall parking situation needs to be looked at because there are a lot of challenges over there. And I know that the association has some concerns about parking next to the lakeside and other locations. So I think that we need to look at that separately. It's a bigger issue than this situation.
And then, yeah, the final question is, did you consider doing paid parking? So certain areas, visitors could, you know, park there, but actually pay to park and then we can actually recoup some of the costs for all those signs?
Not with this study. Again, the request that we had was for residential parking permit. And I agree with you, there is a bigger issue that we need to deal with. And if it is paid parking, if it is other types of restrictions, I think we need to look at that for the overall area.
Great. Thank you, Mr. Middlebrook. Yeah, good questions. And it kind of brought up a question for me, too. Curious, are we able to do fines and tow away zones? So, you know, I feel like the fine is a deterrent, but both of them together, and if we're already going to do this signage, I, I think we should be doing tow away zones because I think it deters people even more than a fine. So I'm just curious, is that legal to do both?
Yes. What we will be doing is that, as we have done in Heavenly, we post a sign plus a tow away underplate, and then we can do both.
That's not proposed now. Do, would we need to put that in the motion?
I don't recall if that needs to be in the resolution itself or if we could just put on the signage. So we might need to get back with you on that. I don't know, Anush, if you know off the top of your head, or maybe Chief Stevenson?
I don't think we've specifically included the tow way in the resolution. And if the council feels that we need to add that, then we can amend the resolution to include the tow way.
Okay. All right.
I would say add it because I remember the opposite. I thought we did, but.
Okay, great. All right. With that, thank you, Mr. Nijad. We will go ahead and open this item to public comment for anybody in the room that would like to give public comment on this item. Mr. Moser.
Roser, South Lake Tahoe. Could I have to, to do the correction here without starting the clock yet?
I will give you a little extra time to address that.
Yes. In, in your resolution, you have under one establishing no parking areas. And it's Azure Avenue RPP on the Westerly side. Actually, for the first three, A, B, and C, it should be Easterly instead of Westerly on the top because the even numbers are on the Easterly side. So the three of those are all wrong. The Hill Road, one is correct. So it should be reversed there. So that, that is a big difference. It's different than, than the map here and the colors here. Okay, so you have a conflict there. Yes, on, what, could you start? Three minutes?
I did. Continue.
Yeah, mentioned about doing it earlier, Mr. Middlebrook, May 15th. I think it should be May 15th. Yeah, I live right there. I live on Azure, so have to deal with this and parking problems. And people don't even pay their tickets. So that's another problem. May 15th, October 31st is what I would suggest. Memorial Weekend is, is big, but also take it through the, kind of the end of boating season because we do have problems with a lot of boats, boat trailers, leave them there, you know, leave them there for a week. One guy left it there blocking the driveway across from me there and the owner checked and still hasn't paid his ticket even. So and it was only 75 bucks. So you get to park for a week blocking the driveway and for free. So that's part of the problem here. Also, permits for multifamily units issued for the owner property for distribution to tenants. You're going to have two guest vehicles and two for, for the houses. But where you have multifamily, you can have, you have multiple and don't have enough, place next to me doesn't have enough parking because he also has his commercial vehicles where tenants should be and could be parking. So you don't have enough space there. So in order, they have to park on the streets. Also, parking, is this the parking going to be allowed on the pavement or off the pavement? Because what are the TRPA regulations for parking on pavement? And, you know, there is dirt on the sides. If you're 19 feet, when you park on Greenwood, if you park on the street, then you only have one lane. You're reducing a two-lane street to, to one lane. So if you park off the street, you have to look at what the TRPA regulations are now for, for parking off-street where they, they changed over by Nevada Beach. Also, residential parking permit and are they going to be for in front of your property? That's what it should be, not be able to park across the street in front of somebody else's house or down the street. You know, should be in front of their own property. Otherwise, it presents problems, which we do have currently, where they don't have, you know, they have multiple vehicles in their, in their yards and stuff. And just about everybody on the streets, the two streets, Greenwood, in fact, all three streets do have driveways and multiple garages. People, most people, a lot of people have garages. But they do have driveways that they can park in and not that many residents really need to park on the street except when they have relatives come up and, and friends and stuff. They need it. So but should be for the parking permits, should be you have to park in front of your own property.
If you don't mind, Mr. Moser, I know I gave you an additional 30 or so seconds, but if you could please just wrap it up for us, that'd be great.
Yeah. And just one, yeah, just one last point is where, yeah, because Mr. Engelhardt in his letter here says, not all houses have driveways and garages and street parking is the normal for owners. That isn't, that isn't necessarily the case. There's, you know, a couple of people that do have multi, multi, multi-vehicles and don't use their own driveways even, but do park on the streets even during snow removal conditions. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Moser. Yes, unless any other public comment? I don't see any in the room. Mr. Nijad, did you want to go ahead and, you can go ahead and come forward if you'd like.
Yes. I think Mr. Moser is correct. Those should be on the Easterly side. So we can make that modification in the resolution.
Okay.
And that in terms of parking passes, what we have done with Heavenly is to issue five passes and anybody with the, the permit would be able to park. There are some areas that are not paved. That is correct. But that's why we're restricting the parking on the other side.
Great. Thank you, Mr. Nijad. All right. With that, we'll go ahead and open up Zoom.
Yeah, we'll just open up our Zoom platform for anyone who wants to provide public comment on agenda item 12. No additional pleasant comments, Mayor.
All right, great. With that, we will go ahead and bring this back to council for more discussion or a motion. I just would say that I definitely support moving into, for whoever is going to make the motion, if, if they do support this, I would look, definitely like to look at the tow away side of things because I think that it's, again, it's just more of a deterrent and something I think we should be doing citywide in no parking areas. And the other thing is I would also support looking at the May 15th and expanding it. So with that, if anybody's want to make a motion?
Yeah, I'd throw one out. I'd make a motion to pass a resolution establishing seasonal no parking restrictions on certain streets in Lakeside residential neighborhood, accepting $7,500 in funds from Lakeside Park Association, appropriating $17,500 from general fund, undesignated excess reserves for implementation of the residential parking permit program, and amending master fee schedule to add parking citation. Fine of $300 for no parking areas listed in this resolution with edits to the resolution, including correcting the Easterly and Westerly designations on item 1A through D, and amending item 5 to include no, to include towing in addition to the fine amounts. Does that work, Ms. Stroud?
Yes. Did you say amend item 5 to include towing or to include no towing?
To include towing.
Include.
Yes. Yeah, include the, the authority to tow. And then also pass a motion authorizing and directing the mayor to execute a cost-sharing agreement with Lakeside Park Association.
Second.
Great. We have a motion in a second.
That motion unanimously carries. Thank you.
Great. With that, we will go ahead and move on to item number 13. This is going to be an ordinance to amend South This is going to be an ordinance to amend South Lake Tahoe City Code to lower speed limits on sections of Pioneer Trail, Ski Run Boulevard, and Lake Tahoe Boulevard. And this will also be Mr. Najab.
Yes, good evening again.
We have a recusal, one second, we just have one recusal.
A recusal due to real property interest adjacent to the agenda area.
Great, thank you, Mr. Robbins, and we'll wait for you to leave the room.
Thank you. For the record, again, my name is Anusha Najab, Director of Public Works and also the City Traffic Engineer. The item before you is a staff recommendation to amend South Lake Tahoe City Code to lower speed limits on sections of Pioneer Trail, Ski Run Boulevard, and Lake Tahoe Boulevard. Setting speed limits in California is prescribed by the California Vehicle Code, Section 22349. The goal of establishing speed limits is to create a reasonable and safe operating speed for the vehicles. Speed limits are established through an engineering and traffic survey. Procedure used to formulate recommendations are included in the California Manual of Traffic Control Devices and applicable sections of California Vehicle Code. The procedure to set speed limit include collecting traffic counts, reviewing collision records, observing roadway conditions, including pedestrians and bicycle activity, and collecting speed survey. Typically, the speed limit is set at 85 percentile speed, which based on studies, is a reasonable speed for the vehicles to travel. There are several sections of California Vehicle Code that applies and were considered in this evaluation. These include, these include the business district or residential district. Each one of them have different definitions in terms of the businesses in front of those roadways. In addition, recently, California passed AB 43 legislation that allows further reduction in speed limits based on collision data and based on pedestrian and bicycle activity. Earlier this year, the police department requested the Public Works Department to conduct the engineering and traffic survey to update the speed surveys. Public Works Department worked with the police department to identify the roadway segments for this study. The city retained the services of JLB Traffic, which are a registered traffic engineering firm to conduct the study. Based on the result of the study and consideration of all of the applicable California Vehicle Code, Caltrans Guidance on Establishing Speed Limits and AB 43 Legislation, JBL is recommending reduction of speed limits for four roadway segments. Pioneer Trail from State Route 50 to Keller with a reduction from 30 to 25. Ski Run Boulevard from State Route 50 to Tamarack with a reduction from 35 to 30. Ski Run Boulevard from Tamarack to Pioneer Trail with a reduction from 35 to 30. And Lake Tahoe Boulevard from State Route 89 to D Street with a reduction from 35 to 30 miles per hour. This table shows all of the changes, and we have highlighted those for you in yellow. This is the map that shows the proposed changes for all of the different roadways within the city. If this is adopted by the City Council today, staff will change the signs with the recommended changes. Public Works Department has the budget for the new signs in our annual operating budget, and that can be accomplished after the second reading is approved on December 10th. Enforcement will go in effect 30 days after the approval. Police will be able to use the radar or LIDAR for enforcement, which will improve compliance and will allow us to operate these roadways in a more safer manner. This action also supports the Vision Zero program that was brought to the City Council because speeding is one of the main factors of fatalities and collisions. So this will help with achieving those goals. Public Works MPD will monitor these roadways in the future. And if there are any additional changes or roadway segments that are warranted, we will bring those to the City Council as well. Mr. Centel is also here from the Police Department to answer any questions that you may have.
Thank you so much, Mr. Najab. With that, we'll bring this back to council if there are any questions.
I have a question.
Sure, Ms. Wallace.
Thank you very much. I'm excited about reducing the speed limit in as many places as we can. With that in mind, I have also been very interested in looking at Sierra Boulevard. And if I look at this California Vehicle Code, Section 515 Residence District, it says an area outside the business district along a highway with a minimum of 13 separate dwelling units on one side or 16 on both sides within a quarter mile. You know, just, it seems like Sierra Boulevard would definitely qualify for that. And based on that, can we just make the decision to do it? Or do we have to do a traffic study by law?
Actually, I requested our traffic engineer to look at that.
Oh, good.
And there are segments that there are no driveways on Ski Run, on Sierra Boulevard. Therefore, we need to do an additional survey. So we can really establish that to be 25 miles per hour based on residential district. So we do need to have another survey for that roadway if that is something that we need to do.
Thank you very much.
Absolutely.
I'll bring it up during.
Great, thank you. Any other council members with questions? Great, with that, thank you so much, Mr. Najab. We will go ahead and open this item to public comment for anybody in the room that would like to give public comment. Seeing none, we'll look on to Zoom.
We'll open up our Zoom platform for anyone who wants to provide public comment on Agenda Item 13. I do see one hand raised, Mr. Spiel, go ahead. Oops, sorry. Go ahead, Mr. Spiel.
Hi, this is Nick Spiel. I'm calling on behalf of the Lake Tahoe Bicycle Coalition. We would like to express our gratitude and support for the proposed speed limit reductions on these several city streets in the context of your broader Vision Zero efforts. We are proud of the city for its commitment to eliminating traffic deaths and serious injuries from our roadway network. And the science is clear that small decreases in speed correspond to huge decreases in the severity of collisions. The proposed corridors on Pioneer Trail, Ski Run Boulevard, and Lake Tahoe Boulevard are highly trafficked areas for bicycles and pedestrians. And we strongly support the city's action to reduce speeds and increase safety in these corridors. Following the successful implementation on these few streets, we look forward to and ask for more traffic calming measures on other streets throughout the city, including Sierra Boulevard, as a part of the broader Vision Zero effort. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Spiel. Next up, we have Ms. Judy Allen.
Oh, thank you. I live off of Sierra Boulevard. And actually, I would like to see a street, a rate, a reduction of speed on Sierra Boulevard. And I must comment that much of this speeding is by public vehicles, including the street sweeper vehicle and sometimes the garbage vehicles and what have you. And so maybe a reminder to these agencies that they should really kind of try and watch their speed because you don't want to get hit by something as big as a garbage truck or a street sweeper or whatever. So at any rate, I do appreciate that, and good luck with that. And thanks for, thanks for your attention.
Thank you, Ms. Allen. No additional public comments at this time, Mayor.
Great, with that, we'll go ahead and bring this back to council for a motion or any more discussion.
Well, I would like to include Sierra Boulevard for all the reasons stated. It is from Paloma Street all the way up to Barbara. There's only one business, it's the church. And there's a lot of, there's a lot of pedestrians. The good part about that Complete Streets project is that we made it a lot more walkable and bikeable, which is our goal. And I've seen issues there. And so I would like to add Sierra Boulevard to a survey, but I'm 100% behind all the rest of us.
We need to bring that back to the City Council.
Oh, okay. Well, I'm requesting that it be brought back to City Council. Thank you.
Would you like to make a motion?
I will make a motion to hold first reading by title only of an ordinance amending South Lake Tahoe City Code, Chapters 4.25.150 through 4.25.180, speed restrictions on certain streets, and refer to second reading and adoption to the December 10th, 2024 meeting. And I would also ask that staff bring back a reduction plan for Sierra Boulevard as well.
Second, second.
All right, we have a motion in a second, and we can go ahead and vote. All right, with that, we will wait for Mr. Robbins to come back into the room for our final item of the night.
We're stuck on the voting screen, Sue. Okay, thank you.
All right. So, okay, we'll go ahead and move on. This is Item 14, the ratification of grant application to California Office of Traffic Safety and Funding Acceptance. And this will be Lieutenant Centel.
Hi, Doug Centel, Lieutenant with the South Lake Tahoe Police Department. And just like you just said, I'm here to present a resolution for ratification acceptance of a Office of Traffic Safety grant that was awarded to the South Lake Tahoe Police Department in the amount up to $45,000. This was applied for and approved for, I'm sorry, awarded in October of this year. And it is for details such as DUI enforcement, pedestrian, bicycle, and motorcycle safety details, as well as some education and some training.
Great, thank you so much. Counsel, any questions on this item? All right, seeing none, we'll go ahead and open up public comment. Excuse me, anybody in the room? It's been a long night. Anybody in the room for public comment on this item? All right, seeing none, we will go ahead and open up Zoom.
Yeah, we'll open up our Zoom platform for anyone who'd like to provide a public comment on Agenda Item 14. No public comments, Mayor.
Great, and with this, we will go ahead and move on to look for a motion or questions.
I can, I can make a motion.
Yeah, I'm sorry, we'll have to do a verbal vote because my system's locked right now.
I move that we pass a resolution ratifying the application authorizing and directing the mayor to execute agreement budget reimbursement of a grant award by the California Office of Traffic Safety in the amount up to $45,000 to facilitate extra enforcement for traffic-related issues for fiscal year 2024, 2025, effective October 1st, 2024, and ending September 30th, 2025.
I'll second.
Great, so we have a motion in a second. We are going to, because of technical difficulties, do a roll call vote.
Yeah, Councilmember Middlebrook.
Aye.
Councilmember Kriegen.
Aye.
Councilmember Robbins.
Aye.
Mayor Proton Wallace.
Aye.
Mayor Bass.
Aye.
That motion unanimously carries, thank you.
Great, all right. With that, we're going to be moving on to our agenda planning calendar, and this will be Mr. Irvin.
Yeah, Mayor Bass, just to highlight three items next meeting, kind of the obvious, but certification of the election results, outgoing council member recognition, and oath of offices for a new council.
Right, with that, we are going to move on to updates and announcements. We will start with Ms. Stroud.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. As you know, and I saw it was in the paper today, the Measure T case will be going to trial next Wednesday. So looking forward to resolution of that one, which has been pending for almost six years.
Great, all right, Mrs. Blankenship.
No, nothing to report, thank you.
Great, Mr. Irvin.
Yeah, just a reminder that this Saturday, November 23rd, registrations at 9 o'clock. Race begins at 10 o'clock for the Turkey Trot. This is for kids ages 2 through 10. Location's the Recreation and Swim Complex. Also, the Gingerbread House inaugural competition. Folks that are interested must register by November 25th. They can enter to win up to $1,000, adult and youth categories. There will be judging at the second night of the Winter Festival of the Lights, which is December 14th, or December 13th, Saturday, December 13th. So want to highlight that. And then the Midtown Area Plan Open House is scheduled for Tuesday, December 10th, 2 to 4 at the South Tahoe Library. And next Thursday and Friday, city offices will be closed for Thanksgiving.
Great, all right, thank you, Mr. Irvin. Mr. Middle, or excuse me, we are moving on to council member reports and comments, and I'll open that up with Mr. Middlebrook. Nothing from Mr. Middlebrook, Mr. Robbins.
I'd like to suggest to get a second to have staff give direction to the Arts, Culture, and Tourism Commission to do some analysis on potential art installations associated with the new REC Center.
Okay, I would just ask staff, maybe is that more appropriate to bring to ACT Commission? As far as to see if the ACT Commission wants to do that? I'm just wondering procedurally, is that a better way to go about this?
Yeah, I'm not, I'm not, that's, I had the same question. I'm not sure, how can we ask the, how can I ask the ACT Commission to do a thing?
Well, councils have the authority to ask that their boards and commissions study a topic. So if there's consensus from council.
I have a question.
Yes.
Isn't, isn't public art part of the master plan already? And so it's already in process or at least in, on paper?
No ongoing public art design with regards to the REC Center.
There is.
I remember it in the renderings.
Yeah, I do, too.
Yeah, but there's no specific detailed analysis being done.
It was just art can go here. Here is a picture of what an art might be. It wasn't actually the art that they would put there.
And are we talking inside or outside of the facility? Okay.
This is, so this isn't on the agenda. So let's just see if there's a second to bring it back.
Just to be clear, though, bringing it to the commission to ask is a better route than us bringing it back to council? Is that what I heard from, from you? So, Mr. Robbins, take it to the commission and then, and that's a better.
I would like for the, I would like the outcome to be that the commission gives some thought to art options in and around the REC Center and then present that to council when they've given it, after they've given it some thought with some recommendations.
But bring it to the commission, and then if you don't get that, bring it back to council for a second. Because I think it's a faster path for you to get what you're wanting to do.
But I would like to ask the ACT Commission to do that. So I'm not sure how we, I would like us to ask them to do this.
Yeah, it sounds like the request from Councilmember Robbins is to bring an item to council, to have the whole council give a request to the ACT Commission. And so the question's there is second for that.
Is that what it has to be?
Well, I don't know, we can get into too much discussion. Yeah, I don't want to, I'd say go to the ACT Commission first. If you don't get what you need, think about bringing it back. But I think you'll probably get what you need, and that's a faster route, so.
Here's what I'll do, I'll just talk to the ACT Commission with John Stark, and we will report back to council.
And if you don't, yeah.
I will second that action.
That's what I was looking for, I wasn't quite sure how to structure, make it happen.
Great.
Yeah.
All right, with that.
I would like for us to, I would like to bring an item back in an appropriate time for a, for the contract with Placemate to be an incentive structured contract. That wasn't in the options presented in, on the agenda item tonight. I would like for us, I would like for, a second for staff to develop some options for that and then bring that back to council to proceed on. Because I think it would make a lot more sense for that to be incentive structured rather than a flat fee, no matter how well they do. So I'd like to see, if that needs to come back as its own agenda item, then that's fine. But I think that's worthy of consideration in terms of, in terms of structuring things so that contracts are efficient.
Okay, I, I don't believe there's a second for that. As I said before, talk to staff, if you need a second, if they're even willing to do that, bring it back. But I think they need to figure out, is that even an option for Placemate? So I don't want to add more of our APC. So anyways, do that first, and if you don't get what you need, come back with it. With that, we are, Ms. Kriegen, did I go to you? I forget, I don't think I did.
You did not.
I, right, Ms. Kriegen.
Thank you. All I have to say is that we have a Clean Tahoe meeting tomorrow. And happily, because I will no longer be the city representative on that board, I will be the chamber representative on that board.
All right, all right, thank you, Ms. Kriegen, Ms. Wallace.
Just would like to talk about how amazing the last four years has been with Ms. Kriegen on, on this council. I, I will miss you very much. And I'm sorry that this is our last meeting together, for me, happy for you. And, and it's not fair that I have to say goodbye to Devon twice because I-
And, and it's not fair that I have to say goodbye to Devin twice because I love him as well and I've enjoyed working with him as well, and thank you, thank you, thank you for taking the call and stepping up and fulfilling the rest of Councilmember Kri, Frigga 's seat. I, I, this is my favorite thing in world to do besides being a mom and grandma, but working with people like the two of you has made it joyful, and I appreciate you. So, sorry. Then also, I would like to see if anybody is interested in giving me a second for looking at the shared mobility ordinance based on Pastor Jerry, out of my head. Foster, thank you, his comments at a meeting a few weeks ago. I think that we have allowed two companies to come in at a high level, and I would like to look at possibly reducing the number of scooters in town. So is-
I will second that, even though I will not be here for that, and thank you for bringing that up.
Thank you.
All right. Is that all?
That's it.
All right, great. All right, with that, it is my turn. I do not have really any updates and announcements. You know, I would actually see about a second based on what we've been talking about with Heavenly and the issues that revolve around just the public safety issue, but with it, I would like to see it come back with Heavenly contributing for the usage on the streets. It needs to see what is the traffic counts there and what does the maintenance costs that would be included in that. Again, this would just be to look at the ability for them to take care of just the plowing and the sanding there, but again, I don't want it to just be coming back as a broad, let them do it. It would be that they need to contribute, whether that's a hundred thousand, a hundred and fifty thousand, for the usage that's happening. And this is not to, again, as we've talked about before, the ball is in Heavenly's court to make parking happen, to make what the true benefits of being part of the city is, but I do think that we look at us as the city possibly creating a public safety issue. But again, I just want to reiterate to staff that it needs to come back with what are the costs that it's costing the city to have that amount of traffic coming in and out of Heavenly, and they would need to pay the city that funding for us to agree to them to be able to just plow and sand that part of the street. Oop, I hit my, hit my microphone. And again, I'm not also asking for this to come back, we have a lot going on on our APC. It would be up to the staff to figure out the timing for that to happen, knowing that it will take a little time to figure out what is that cost? Is it a hundred thousand, is it two hundred and fifty thousand that they would need to pay into us?
Not to get into the discussion, but are you talking about only cash or in terms of like, they say they do extra rounds with the plow, like in kind?
Yeah, I would like that clarification as well.
They spend that much on staff and effort?
It's, it's more or less like if we have, let's say it's a hundred thousand vehicles that are driving over Skirron and Keller, and it's probably more than that through the season, what is the wear and tear of those vehicles coming in and out of that resort? And they need to pay that to the city as they don't pay a single dollar in tax right now for the use of those streets coming in and out. So I know that that'll take a little time. I don't know that we have traffic counts for that, but I, I don't want to see us make any kind of agreement without them paying into our city coffers to, to pay for the uses of those, but I also don't want the city to be pinned with, you know, we're creating bus spinouts, we're creating unsafe, we're creating unsafe-
Conditions.
Public safety conditions, and I think there is a real concern. And again, this doesn't take the ball out of Heavenly's court to get parking, to get the benefits of annexation. The ball's still in their court. I think it's just a reasonable way for us to come to a middle ground on this public safety concern, as well as for us to get some funding for the use of those streets in this year, so.
I'm, I'm still confused what you're asking for. Are you asking for one thing or two things?
Well, it'd be confined in one thing that would come back to council, because the item would come back with, okay, we're going to allow this simple agreement, but they're also, part of that agreement is they're going to pay in, let's call it a hundred and fifty, let's call it two hundred and fifty thousand, because they are using our streets without paying into the city budget.
Okay, I'm going to second that because I think that we should have the conversation.
Great. Yeah, exactly. It's to say that we're going to approve it, it's to have the conversation, and again, thank you for the second.
I want to clarify that that is a constrained, your intention is that that is a constrained topic only on the issue of payment either in kind or in monetary for operation of the street and maintenance of the street. Not any other topic will be on the agenda and will be, we will not be able to talk about any other topic on that agenda. I want to clarify that so that staff will make sure.
Yeah, there was a second to bring that back, and that's the scope of that item.
Cool. Great. I think, yeah. All right, with that, I think that will conclude our updates from council members, and we are adjourned at nine twenty-five.